Good morning and welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 Board Meeting. We will begin with our invocation from Pastor John Dewberry, Henry County Police, our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you so much for this great day. We thank you for the beautiful weather that you've given us. And Father, we do thank you for the government of Henry County. We do pray and ask that you just use them to be an instrument of encouragement to the citizens of Henry County. And Father, we do ask that you just hold back all satanic and demonic forces that may try and intervene in the business of the government. We ask that you allow your sovereign hand to be waved upon each board member and allow them to know that you are still in control. And we ask it all in your Son Jesus Christ's name we do pray. Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Folks, I'd ask the Chair for a moment to speak to the Henry County citizens, Chair Harrell, and this Board of Commissioners. As a licensed funeral director, I've been a public servant for my entire professional career, ministering, problem solving, helping people from all walks of life in their time of need. I ran for public office in the same spirit of servant leadership, believing that a listening ear, energetic effort, and a spirit of common purpose could make a difference in our community. I firmly believe that a public position of trust brings with it an almost sacred duty, which is to do what the public elected me and this entire Board to do. Our constituents elected us to represent them and to deal transparently and honestly in open meetings, with all employees and vendors and land purchasers and concerned citizens to be heard equally. They elected us to show up for the planned meetings and face issues head-on, to endure the difficult discussions and govern by consensus. Citizens expect us to prepare for votes and planning efforts using facts and figures, and to use constructive conversation and ethical decision-making to lead this county forward. I have not found these expectations are being met. Instead, politics has obliterated the real mission of governing. Politics has destroyed any expectation of genuine dialogue because there is no trust. There is always some unseen, unknown motivation at work. Politics has taken over. I was not elected to be a politician. I am not a politician. I am a servant who, in this politicized environment, cannot achieve what I was elected to do. After much prayerful consideration, soul-searching, and thoughtful deliberation, I resign from the Henry County Board of Commissioners, effective immediately on this day, February 1st, 2022. Respectfully submitted.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. There are going to be, I need to make a couple amendments to the agenda. The appointment of the Vice Chair position, as well as under Financial Services, Section B that discusses the ARPA funds will be for discussion only. Those two items will be added and adjusted to the agenda. I'd like to call our HR Director, Harold Cooper, forward for the recognition of employee retirements.
Good morning, Madam Chair, distinguished Board members. It's an honor to present to you two retirees for the month of January. Ms. Julia Partridge, 24 years of service with the Tax Incessors Office. And Ms. Patricia Duhani, five years of service with Henry County Parks and Rec. We thank them for their service and commitment to this great county. Thank you.
Now we'll have our county manager to come forward. Government Finance Officers Association Certification of Achievements for Excellence in Financial Reporting.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Board. At this time, I'd like to ask Bernita Campbell, Ivy Adams, Marcus Adams, and David Smith to come forward, please. So this morning, it gives me pleasure to recognize these four staff members. As you may or may not be aware, but the Government Finance Officers Association recently recognized Henry County for their Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget. This is the first time that we've ever received this award from GFOA for our budget. And it is not a simple process. The staff has worked diligently to make sure that the budget presentation has been prepared, and it is a significant achievement that many entities thrive to achieve. As part of receiving it, they have to have a couple of required documents. They have to have a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communication device. And standing before me this morning, our team was recognized for having a proficient document. And they have to have proficiency in all four categories out of the 14 mandatory criteria. So I wanted to take this time this morning to recognize our staff members because we have 32 departments, not including our judicial system, that these members manage, meet with our department leadership on a daily basis, prepares our mid-year budget, talks to a number of you all regarding our budgets, and really keeps us in line in terms of where our spending occurs. And so this morning, I wanted to recognize David is our Financial Cluster Leader over our budget team. Bernita is the Budget Director. And then she has a staff of two that keeps us all in order. So this morning, I did want to take the time to recognize them and to present them with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award presented to Henry County for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2021. At this time, I'd like to recognize our staff members. If we can get a picture, I know the Board is there, but they can just kind of stand in front of you all. But again, thank you all for your hard work. It does not go unnoticed, and I truly, truly appreciate having you all a part of Team Henry. Thank you so very much.
Do you need a stepstone? Do you need a stepstone? Okay, next, we have several presentations that are on our agenda today, and we're going to start with our COVID-19 update from our Public Health, Henry County, as well as Piedmont Henry. I'm so happy to have our CEO of Piedmont Henry, Dr. Lilly Henson, here with us today to provide a COVID update to Henry County and its citizens and the community.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board members. We've been asked to give a COVID update this morning as part of a collective team. But before we jump into that, I want to take just a quick second and publicly thank all of the public safety professionals that have served this county during this pandemic. For approximately 750 days, these men and women have experienced extraordinary mental and physical fatigue, and sometimes I don't believe that they get the public recognition that they deserve. So I just want to take a quick second to thank all the men and women of our public safety professional service. So thank you. This morning, we got several representatives. As the Chair mentioned, we're going to give an update from Henry County EMA, the Emergency Services, Emergency Management Division. We have a Department of Public Health with us, and also the hospital representation as well. We're going to run through some quick slides to recap some updated numbers since the last meeting that we've met. As far as a response on the EMS side of the House, we're still averaging a little over 100 calls per day as it relates to specifically the COVID. Moving into our testing site update, we're going to let Kevin speak on a few slides here.
Good morning, Madam Chair. We're continuing to see a decline trend in testing throughout the county. From January 17th to the 28th, Red Hawk across the street conducted 1,045 tests. Marketplace did 200, and North Mount Carmel did 178. Due to a decrease in demand for testing throughout the county, the North Mount Carmel site is closed, and their staff is moving over to the Marketplace location. We're seeing a positivity rate down over 50% from our last meeting. We're currently sitting at 20.3 positivity rate. Our last meeting, we were at 43%. We are currently working with planning and zoning to work on and establish a permitting process for the pop-up testing sites throughout the county. That's going to encompass the requirement of a business license and a CLIA lab certification. We're working with planning and zoning in the state to make sure that's where we need it to be moving forward. And, next slide. We're continuing our push of information out to the community, focusing on social media, the county website, and Henry TV. Our PIO team is doing a great job getting the information necessary out there. They have created flyers that we have pushed out to our faith-based leadership, so they are passing that out to their congregation and spreading the word on vaccine sites and testing availability. So we're going to continue that mission and try to get folks to these testing sites. More importantly, the vaccine sites that are shown here, there's 33 listed here. Those are shown available in Henry County on the DPH website. Our local DPH office gave 236 vaccines just in January. So we are seeing a positive increase there, and our goal is to bring that number up a good bit moving forward. And Chief here is going to discuss how we're going to make that happen.
So as Kevin mentioned, there is an abundant amount of resources available to the community in order to receive a vaccine should somebody want to receive that. What we want to focus on as a team is for the people that might not be able to respond or to be able to get to one of those locations in order to receive the vaccine. So we're taking a four-pronged approach and creating what we're calling a healthcare intervention team in order to focus on that. So what that team consists of is somebody to actually administer the vaccines. Once you administer the vaccine, that person has to be observed for about 10 to 15 minutes. So we have to have somebody dedicated to watch over those personnel. The administration part of that is the records-keeping part that goes along with administering a vaccine to make sure that the data is collected correctly. Logistics personnel to assist, and then law enforcement to provide security with us depending on where we go in the county. Four modes of approach that we want to take with that. So Model 1 is we have low vaccinated areas, and we're going to see a map here in just a second. So what we're wanting to do is create a team that will deploy to the areas in Henry County that have been identified by the Department of Public Health as low vaccinated rate locations in the county. This team will stand up an onsite vaccination drive with these neighborhoods and go door-to-door offering the vaccines. That's Approach 1. Here you see the map of where DPH has provided that we have low vaccinated areas in the county. Dead center of the county, in the center of McDonough, you see is the low vaccination rate, and then you see one up at the north end of the county as well. Those sites were, again, identified by DPH as being a low vaccinated numbers. Those are the areas that we want to focus on more specifically to try to increase the numbers. Mode 2 is a fixed-location vaccination site. We'll host a vaccination drive at a fixed location to ensure that all the citizens have the opportunity to receive the vaccination. Will be available both in the north and the south end of the county, and it'll be a drive-through area, sort of like we did at the first vaccination drive where we set up at Atlanta Motor Speedway. Our homebound citizens, we really want to focus on this group that might not be able to get out and receive the vaccination. We're going to do this by partnering with the Henry County Mills on Wheels and hopefully be able to identify some citizens that are not able to make it for a vaccine and bring the vaccine directly to them. So we have a couple of ways that we can do that. Once we identify personnel, we can set up through transit to go and pick somebody up, take them to the health department, receive the vaccine, and then take them back home. Or we can contact DPH directly. DPH will then go to that person's house, give them the vaccine, so they'll be able to receive it that way. And then Number 4, our long-term care facilities. And DPH is going to speak on this a little bit specifically, but they have identified that our long-term care facilities in the county are still a little bit underserved when it comes to the vaccination rates. And I'm going to leave that one for DPH because they have some more details to speak on that. Some of the other things that we've done as a county, we've provided rapid tests. We've got 500 rapid tests that were given to each Commissioner for them to distribute throughout their districts. The rapid tests are available now at the Henry County Health Clinic across the street. They've been given several thousand tests, and that program should be standing up sometime this week to push the information out for the county employees to go to the actual health clinic to get the test. Tests are also available at covidtest.org where you can order your own, be shipped straight to your house for no cost as well. That concludes the Henry County's part of the presentation. Any questions before we move on? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Good morning, Board. So this morning, we're going to give you guys some updated data on what we're seeing in Georgia, Metro Atlanta, and in Henry County, just to give you guys an idea of where we are and where we're headed. Today, I have with me Donovan Stevens. He's one of my lead epidemiologists. He is one of my big decision-makers as we make decisions on where we deploy resources and what we do as far as communications in the community. So I'm going to turn it over to him.
Good morning. So looking at this map here, we see that US vaccination rates are far outpacing Georgia vaccination rates. Here on the left, you see a lot of blue around the map everywhere nationally. However, in the southeast region, it's a lot brighter. So when we look at Georgia, we understand that the majority of our counties are below 40%. This matters because a lot of decisions are being made at the national level without special consideration for our local situation, which differs from our national level. All right, so looking here, we see that elderly population is actually the most vaccinated population. Individuals 64 and younger, they actually lag the most. School-aged children specifically lag even more, which puts them at the greatest risk, especially as this pandemic continues. Again, Georgia vaccination rates are below the national average, but Henry County is behind the state average. So we see right here, we have 54% fully vaccinated in Georgia, but only 46 fully vaccinated in Henry County. There has been an uptick in vaccinations received for the 45-year-old versus the 35-year-old group here. This indicates that low vaccination rates exist among our working-class residents. Also, looking at this county by county comparison of several metropolitan counties, of those posted here, Henry County is second out of the bottom three. So we're at 47. That puts us between Clayton and Douglas. This means that Henry County is at increased risk for transmission and positivity, and unvaccinated individuals are at greater risk in this county versus the other counties. Now, this slide is a little busy, so I'm going to take a second to explain it, but not too long, okay? Unvaccinated people demonstrate risk of being transmitted almost twice as high as when compared to vaccinated individuals. However, unvaccinated people's risk of death was almost three times as great when compared to fully vaccinated people. Okay? Whether we evaluate classes, hospitalization, or deaths, the occurrence, the incidence, is still the same. We see that it's far less for those who are boosted, far less for those who are vaccinated versus those who are unvaccinated. So this brings me to the final point, that we need to increase the number of vaccinated residents here in Henry County. We see #50Henry, incentives for immunity. One thing that we know is that we're combating vaccine hesitancy all the time, which we know is a delay in acceptance of vaccines. But what we don't talk about is something that I termed vaccine hostility. So these are individuals who are outright saying no, okay? They don't want to be vaccinated. Well, what research has taught us is that it's best to focus our energy on the individuals who are vaccine hesitant versus those who are vaccine hostile. So in order to accomplish our goal, we would like to focus incentives in those groups. Here's just a little quote, "For achieving high population levels of vaccine uptake, a payment-for-risk model with a minimum fare level of incentive set in proportion to the risk of burdens incurred may be the fairest approach if education, encouragement, and facilitation fail." So we just have to keep talking about the vaccine and how it works. Here's just a quick data overview of where our numbers are currently. Vaccination rates, we know, are lagging behind nationally. They lag behind the state as well. However, our transmission rates are doing better. We are below in transmission and positivity for the state and nation, and for our total cases are also below the average in the nation and state as well. So Henry County is doing better in terms of transmission, but we're lagging behind in vaccination. So in summary, we're approaching a shift from focus on testing towards a shift on vaccination as positivity and transmission decreases. Secondly, we know that individuals are able to contract the virus still, but the vaccine does work. It works from the standpoint of, first, preventing death; second, preventing severe illness and hospitalizations; and, thirdly, the contraction of the virus or transmission. Third, vaccine efficacy against mild and moderate disease is reduced due to waning immunity. This is why we need a third dose, okay? And lastly, vaccinated individuals present a faster decline in viral load. So what that means is individuals who are vaccinated, they tend to be sick a lot less. They tend to be contagious a lot less time. So that kind of makes sense when we think about the CDC's move to five-days isolation period.
Thank you. I really appreciate Chair Harrell's invitation to come talk about the effects of the pandemic on Piedmont Henry Hospital. And what my DPH colleague just showed shows what happens when you have a low vaccination rate in the county, and the healthcare system gets overwhelmed, as is seen throughout the country, as all these patients show up in our emergency room. So this is just a reminder that our Piedmont promise is to make a positive difference in every life we touch. That is why we come to work every day. And our values, including championing patient-centered care, simplifying teamwork and connections, being an owner, and embracing the future, are values that we've had to live through the last two years of this pandemic, especially embracing the future since this is a new virus that we're all learning to manage. So just a couple of basic facts for those of you who don't know our logistics. We have 236 licensed beds at Piedmont Henry, of which there are 24 ICU beds and 16 IMCU beds. There are also 55 emergency room beds for evaluation when you come into the emergency room. These numbers are important as I go through these slides to show you the effect of the pandemic at every portion of our hospital and its impact. So this diagram on top starts from March 2020, when the first case of COVID was seen at Piedmont. And at the very end on the right is what's happened with the last wave that we've encountered, which is Omicron. The fourth wave that you see there, where we have a peak of 175 patients, is with the Delta variant that we saw in the late summer of last year. You can see that with each successive wave, we have seen more and more patients. And just to point out that, again, we have 236 beds in our hospital. So when you have 175 patients in the hospital with COVID, there really isn't much room left for any other patient coming into the hospital. We also, with this last Omicron surge, even though there's a lot of talk, you know, in the community about how it's a much milder variant and therefore it's okay to catch Omicron, we actually broke our hospital census for overall number of admitted patients two weeks ago with 297 patients. Again, we only have 236 licensed beds, so you have to figure out where we're going to put the other 61 patients who were admitted. So from the beginning of the pandemic until earlier this week, we have taken care of 4,812 COVID patients at Piedmont Henry. Of those, about 9% were vaccinated, so 91% were non-vaccinated individuals. The number of COVID patients that we've taken care of at Piedmont Henry represent almost 5% of the total COVID-positive hospitalized patients in the state of Georgia. However, we only represent 1% of all the acute care beds in the hospital, in the state of Georgia, I apologize, which means that we have taken care of a disproportionate number of COVID patients at Piedmont Henry compared to a lot of our colleagues in the community in the state of Georgia. compared to a lot of our colleagues in the community in the state of Georgia. Out of that 4,812 patients, we had almost 600 patients die, which represents 2.1% of the COVID patient deaths in the state of Georgia. Again, something that although we're sad to see the number of patients who've died, given the number of patients that we've cared for, we've actually are proud of the fact that we've done very well due to the great care offered by our caregivers. So in terms of patient days, obviously, every patient comes in the hospital and stays for a different number of days. You can see that we had about 38,000 patient days of COVID in the last two years, of which about 25% represent patients in the ICU. And then the other 75% representing what we call med-surg beds, which are lower-acuity patients. If you look at the first emission in February of 2021, after the vaccine became available and a patient came in with, who had been vaccinated, you can see that we've taken care of 2,500, almost 2,600 patients with COVID. You know, when the vaccine became available, my healthcare workers thought that we saw the light at the end of the tunnel. We were all exhausted, both physically and mentally. And yet, we've taken care of an equal number of patients now post-vaccine availability compared to before the vaccine became available. We have taken care of 422 patients who have been vaccinated, which represents 16% of the patients that are admitted. Prior to Omicron surge, we saw only about 8% of people being admitted with COVID who had been vaccinated. We also don't have the statistics with respect to those who've been given the booster. So when we say they've been vaccinated, it means the two doses associated with Pfizer and Moderna. And then we have a mandate with, within Piedmont that all of our employees and vendors have to be vaccinated. However, federal law requires that we give a religious or medical exemption to those who meet the criteria. And of the, with Omicron, some of our departments were fairly decimated. I have one department that had 50% of their staff out with, with COVID. And again, when you look at all the patient, all the employees who are out with COVID with this last wave, 85% of them had not been vaccinated because they had a religious or medical exemption. So this is our emergency room. We average 91,000 visits a year in our emergency room. It's one of the busiest ERs in the state. We have only 55 ER beds, which means that when you have 247 visits a day, you have to be able to see all those patients in those 55 ER beds. Our goal of what's called left without being seen is less than 2%. Unfortunately, with the overwhelming number of ER patients that we've seen this year because of COVID, our left without being seen rate is 11.4%. That's an unacceptable percentage. Every one of those patients who leave our ER without being seen because we don't have the capacity or they don't want to wait to be seen, represents a patient who we have not evaluated and have not treated appropriately. So as a hospital CEO who's responsible for the care of the patients that we see, this is a number that keeps me up every night. In particular, I'll just point out that with Omicron, we saw an overwhelming number of patients who come, came into our emergency room asking to be tested for COVID. It became impossible. And if you had come into the emergency room over the last two months with a stroke or a heart attack, you would have been delayed because of all the hundreds of patients who showed up in our ER looking for a COVID test, which we were unable to provide because, you know what? There aren't enough test kits out there. So these are pictures of our ICU. And you can see our staff members protected from head to toe so that they can take care of these very, very sick patients. I just want to point out that we have 124 ICU beds and 16 IMCU beds. So the capacity to take care of 40 critical care patients. Two weeks ago, we broke a record with 77 critical care patients in the hospital, which meant that not only did we have to have ICU patients in the IMCU, we also had to move them up to 4-South, which is actually a medical surgical unit because, again, we didn't have enough beds. Some of these patients were housed in the emergency room. The ER is not a good place to be housing patients who've been admitted to the hospital. The skill sets of the nurses and the doctors taking care of patients in the emergency room are very different than the skill sets of nurses and doctors in the ICU or up on the med-surg units. In addition, when you have patients who are housed in the ER, who need to be upstairs, it means that out of those 55 beds that we have, there are beds that cannot be used for the patients who continue to come in through the emergency room doors waiting to be evaluated. And again, you can imagine that if you were coming through with chest pain or stroke symptoms, it meant that your care was delayed because we were holding patients in the ER. You can see on the right-hand side some numbers. That's beds that are available in our ambulatory surgery center, in our main hospital OR, in our cardiac cath lab, and our interventional radiology. So when things got really bad, we had to stop surgical procedures. We had to stop doing cardiac catheterizations, which are not exactly optional. And we had to stop doing interventional procedures because we had to house hospitalized patients in those areas that had been admitted and needed the care that we needed to provide them. Just to give you an example, part of the reason why Chair Harrell had asked me to give this presentation was because we had made a plea to the public to please understand what we were going through, that we weren't making decisions arbitrarily and capriciously because, you know, because I had the ability to do that, but it was because we were trying to balance the care that we were providing. So two weeks ago, when we broke the record for the number of critical care patients, we had to make a decision to stop surgeries. We proceeded to call the patients who were scheduled to come in for elective procedures. And just to give you an example of some of the abuse that our staff have had to tolerate, one individual yelled at the poor woman whose pure job was to tell the patient that his schedule, his scheduled surgery was canceled, and not recognizing that she really had no control over that, right? None of us had control over that. We had to take care of the sickest of the sick who were there. And when you had to balance an elective procedure versus someone who was critically ill, my job is to take care of the most critically ill patients. So that's just one example of some of the abuse that our staff have had to tolerate. And also, it also comes back to the community. Because what happens is if you were waiting for a catheterization, a cardiac cath study, and couldn't get that done because we had to stop the procedure so that we can take care of sicker patients, it also has an effect on the community. This is some more pictures of what our staff have to deal with. So monoclonal antibody clinic. For those of you who are familiar with the hospital, this is the Subway space, the space right outside of Subway, which normally is used for our staff to eat lunch. But because we had no room left in the inn, we opened up a monoclonal antibody clinic there. We gave over 1,000 doses. And these doses, these monoclonal antibodies allowed patients not to get admitted. So it allowed us to take the stress off the hospital, the demand on the hospital inside by being able to treat patients who didn't need to be hospitalized and could be managed as an outpatient. We serve not only Henry County residents, but residents of counties all around us because it, we felt that it was important and our obligation to provide a care that would help decrease the impact on healthcare systems, not just our own. This is when we received the first dose of vaccine in December of 2020. I guess it would have been 2020. I'm really proud of the fact that we bought this fancy minus-80 storage refrigerator so that we would be able to store the Pfizer vaccine. We were one of the first hospitals in the state to receive the vaccine because of that. And these are our vaccine clinics. This is Dr. Evans and Dr. Ahmed, two of our physician leaders getting the vaccine early on. So I just want to give an example of August 23rd. Those of you in the community may have heard rumors that we had shut down the hospital that day, which is actually not something you can actually do. But at that point, that evening, we had 171 patients in the emergency room. So I mentioned earlier, we have 55 beds to see, to see patients. Of those 55 beds, 27 of them were filled with patients who had already been admitted, which meant that there were only 28 beds available to see the other emergency room patients. Unfortunately, those beds were already taken by patients who had already come in, which meant that we had 116 patients in our waiting room, of which 46 had not been triaged. That meant being given a, a number on a scale of one to five that talks, that helps identify the severity of your symptoms and how quickly you needed to be seen. And then 70 without a medical screening examination, which is a very preliminary evaluation by a provider to see how sick you are. So you could imagine, my emergency room medical director called me up and said, "I've been in mass casualty circumstances that are safer than this." So it was all hands on deck. I'm, I'm the queen of selfies. And this is on the left-hand side, a picture of me, my chief nursing officer, Paula Butts, and Dr. William Watkins, our chief medical officer. We were in there hauling trash so that we could clean up rooms upstairs so that our patients in the ER could be pulled upstairs so that we can see these 116 patients who had not yet been evaluated. On the right is James Atkins, who's our chief operating officer. Again, Dr. Watkins, and I think that's me, again, hauling trash so that we can ensure that our roofs were clean and our nurses could focus on taking care of patients. This is Brent Robinson, our executive director, and Jana Warren, our HR director, and me, again, hauling out trash that night so that we could clean up rooms for our patients. This is what happens when our community is not vaccinated. This is Dr. Watkins, who, you know, is an administrator but is doing COVID testing. And Paula Butts, our chief nursing officer, back in scrubs, taking care of patients because that's how shorthanded we were. We've been blessed to be part of a large healthcare system, Piedmont, so we've had a lot of system corporate employees come down and help. On the left is a woman associated with a physician enterprise. On the right is Dr. Lee Hamby, our system chief medical officer, helping me distribute food trays on New Year's Day because so many of our staff were out sick because of COVID. I want to mention that Piedmont Henry has had the dubious honor of being one of the hardest-hit of all the Piedmont facilities, of which there are 15 of us. This is the Georgia National Guard. Again, we were, had the dubious honor of being one of the 10 hardest-hit hospitals in the state of Georgia, which is why the governor deployed the National Guard, both with the fourth wave as well as with this most recent wave. We've been really blessed to get a lot of support from the community. This is from a parade that the, the community threw early on in the pandemic. So just to show you a couple of healthcare trends, in case you're not in the healthcare industry, pre-pandemic, there was a national shortage of nurses. When the pandemic hit, a lot of nurses made the decision that this wasn't necessarily what they signed up for. They were putting their families at risk, and so they chose to resign or retire. Also, as the demand for nurses occurred across the country, many nurses, not just at Henry, but across the country, took travel assignments because they could make way much more money than any of us could pay on a regular assignment. We also have to compete for labor with other industries. So Henry County is blessed to have a lot of wonderful industries. And some of our workers, like our transporters and our EVS workers, don't have to work in a hospital. As a matter of fact, they can work somewhere else, like in a distribution center, make more money, not be exposed to the risks associated with working in the hospital. You all are familiar with the Great Resignation. In addition, we've seen with exhaustion associated with this pandemic, future leaders being lost. I have many of my nurse managers saying to our chief nursing officer, "I've seen how hard you work, and I don't want to do this. I don't, I don't see how I can take care of my family." We are all burnt out and exhausted. A study on the right that I want to point out shows that one out of every five physician and two out of every five nurses plan on leaving practice in the next two years. And then the other thing that we've seen is that workplace violence towards healthcare workers has gone up. So some of you may have read the Henry Harrell article about my plea to folks to please treat our healthcare workers with grace and kindness. You know, early on in the pandemic, we were called heroes. We don't really want to be called heroes. We just want to be treated with respect. I put up this picture of Dr. Google because one of the signs of disrespect is not recognizing the amount of training that goes into training physicians and nurses and advanced practice providers and using Google as a, as a substitute for that knowledge. You know, my ask again is that we treat our healthcare workers with respect and grace and to understand the number of years of training that our healthcare workers undergo to get to where they are. Personally, I've been in school for 25 years of my life. That's almost, almost half of my life. And having to receive phone calls from family members threatening me because I won't give them medication, I won't force my physicians to give them treatment, their loved ones' treatments, that have not been shown to be evidence-based and proven to be effective, is quite frankly disconcerting and disrespectful. I just wanted to stop with a couple more examples. We got a, we got some very nasty Facebook posts, and we, we tracked those because a patient's loved one was angry that he couldn't get through to the nurses taking care of his wife. And he got frustrated and he posted that on Facebook. What he didn't realize was that in that hour and a half, there had been four cardiac arrests on that floor. And the nurses were running around, basically trying to keep their patients alive. So yes, it would be nice to share information about how your loved one is doing, but at the end of the day, when we have to triage because we have limited resources, we have to take care of our patients and ensure that they get through their stay with the best care possible. And finally, our goal is to make a positive difference in every life we touch. We try really, really hard. We're not always able to do it because our resources are strained because of this pandemic, but we appreciate the ability to care for our community, and we take that responsibility very seriously. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes the COVID update presentation. Any questions from the board?
If there are any questions from the board, yes, Commissioner Thomas.
I don't have any real questions, but a couple of comments I would like to make. First, Chief, to you and your team, thank you so much for presenting a plan of action, something I was looking for before. And I really do appreciate the process that you've outlined today. And I look forward to working with you on that plan. I won't just sit and watch it. I'll be hands-on, some way, somehow, to help it happen and come forth. The next thing is, it's good to hear how well the team is working together with the other facility like Piedmont Henry. I know Piedmont is under a lot of stress to serve this county, and as she stated, other people around her. So Dr. Henson, thank you so much for the work that you're doing for this community. I have been up there and had to be a patient there as well. And I will say the service was absolutely wonderful. And I did all I could to let people know I was not there as a commissioner, never signed in as one. They found out anyway, but I still got excellent service before they found out there was a title. We have been doing a lot that we can, when I say we, this board, and outside of this board as a community, to support Piedmont Henry. And we will continue to do that, especially the nonprofits that have come together to work with you. Let us know what else we can do together to support this team and to support the mission you guys were forward today, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are, Commissioner Clemens?
I have a question in reference to the Mount Carmel site that you mentioned that moved to the marketplace. Did someone secure the marketplace? Because it was my understanding that they are not at the marketplace, so...
No, I, I spoke with Travis, who's running the ID Techs out of the house over there. And his goal was for, beginning Monday, to transition to the Ashley Furniture Marketplace site, everyone that was working in the North Mount Carmel site.
So no one secured the spot for them, yeah?
Not from our side of the house. That's being handled by Mr. Travis.
Any additional questions or comments?
Thank you so much for all that you all are doing. Thank you, Dr. Henson, for coming and giving us that update. And do know that this board and the community support Piedmont Henry Hospital. And we, whatever we can do to continue in that support, please let us know. Okay. I'm going to kind of switch the agenda just a little bit. I'm going to ask David to come forward and do the presentation on the ARPA funds.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Henry County community. What you have before you is a resolution that I'd like to, and I'm glad that this is just for presentation and discussion purposes, because what we have in attendance today are several of the organizations and agencies that have requested the use of funds. So I just want to walk through the process right now. So we received approximately $45 million in ARPA funds. Of that amount, we received our first half of $22 million. We made requests of stakeholders, not only in the community, but of our departments, of what their needs were. And I've made a presentation of what those requests were. Another part was we conducted a community survey to get what the community's requests were. And out of those requests, we developed the updated presentation and presented it to you. And after that, the chair and several commissioners wanted to meet with me individually to discuss their needs. I have not had opportunity to meet with all commissioners. And so I didn't want to come with a resolution without having all of the commissioners' input in terms of how they'd like to see those funds used for district, particular district initiatives in their community. But I did want to have the opportunity for several of the stakeholders to present, and I believe some are here today. I'm hoping, I don't know if the Atlanta Motor Speedway is here, as well as we have someone for housing affordability from Habitat that's here. Thank you. I don't know if anyone is here from the chamber, as well as, I was hoping someone was from Community Gardens, even though they're small, small requests. It's one of our local nonprofits that had a request that was made. And so I'd like to have them, if possible, come up and present to you theirs. Included in your package was a spreadsheet of how we saw those funds being allocated over the next several years. We have until 2024 to obligate all the funds and until 2026 to spend all of those funds. And so included in your package is that. You just heard a presentation from Piedmont Henry, Dr. Henson. They did not make a request, but I was aware and our staff was aware of their need. And so there's an amount that's in there for them. And she's already talked about the hardship that they are under at Piedmont Henry. But note that they did not make a request, but there's an amount that's included in there for Piedmont Henry as well. So if I may have someone, representatives from those various agencies, come up and talk to you with their presentation, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Proceed.
We'll start with Mr. Hutchinson from the Speedway.
Thank you, David. Madam Chair and the board, good morning. Hope you guys are doing well. I trust that each of you have seen Atlanta Motor Speedway's proposal to this point. If you have not, please do reach out to us. We've got a couple of copies here today. If you haven't seen it, if we don't have time to get it to you today, then we could certainly send it to your office and would be happy to do so.
Are you prepared to take any questions that they may have? There was a total request of about $10.5 million in what you proposed to use it for?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, David, for calling me yesterday afternoon. It was late yesterday afternoon, so I haven't had a ton of time to prepare, but certainly would be willing to answer any questions that I possibly can.
What I, what were the items that were on the list? I know that Atlanta Motors, David, can you put the slide up of the requests from RDU?
I didn't, I don't have that presentation. It was several meetings ago, but I can try to find out where that is right now.
Madam Chair, I can, I can address that if you'd like while David takes a look. Atlanta Motor Speedway, just like every other business in the world, was not exempt from COVID and the effects that COVID had on our business. We sustained losses of over $9.5 million. As you may recall, while COVID arrived in Henry County before March of 2020, it specifically affected Atlanta Motor Speedway beginning March 13th, 2020. It was event weekend for us. We had spent millions and millions of dollars preparing for the event, which, as you know, has a massive economic impact on our county. We lost other major events, regional and national events. And during this entire time, rather than shutter our doors and close up the business to ride out the storm, we elected to stay open. As you heard, we, the chiefs say, we were a mass vaccination site. We held food drives, blood drives. We tried to pivot and give people an opportunity to have in-car experiences at the track. And I say all of this only to make sure everyone understands that Marcus Smith Speedway Motorsports continued to pay our wages 100% so that we could stay open. By doing this, we were, we were able to attract other events to the Speedway. You saw that we were able to facilitate Henry County high school graduations. We attracted four Monster Jam events, three Supercross events. And when we do good, the entire county does good, the region does good. So we were able to help other businesses continue to operate as well. We have been 100% privately funded since 1960, when we opened our doors. March 20th will be the 107th 500-mile race ran at Atlanta Motor Speedway. We continue to try to be the best possible steward to our community that we can be. Directly to your question, Madam Chair, the project design and implementation, the projects that were submitted to the county for A R P funds would be parking lot repairs. And when I say parking lot repairs, please understand, I'm not talking about just paving roadways around the Speedway that are dilapidated. I'm talking about our parking lots, which have a major economic impact in track rental and event business to this county, which directly helps sustain business for the, for the other community, small businesses as well. A media center remodel. Again, our facility was built in 1990. The current media center facility was built in 1997. This will have a direct impact for us to have the ability to attract large national conventions, corporate meetings, regional conferences. It'll help us level the playing field in alluring more potential out-of-state, out-of-county clients. It'll incorporate new technology for media outlets. A garage remodel, much to the same point. We've got 44,000 square feet of indoor space. A remodel will make these areas more suitable for attracting large conventions. We'll upgrade the sound system, resurfacing the floor, installing H V A C so that we can attract these conventions to Henry County. And a new public address system. It'll help with the safety of our guests. It'll help us enhance the sound system in the Speedway, which again, will enhance and strengthen our ability to attract clients to Henry County. Not to mention, it'll help with the, the Henry County graduation process as well. Please understand that, again, we have been 100% public privately funded since 1960. When you look at facilities like Mercedes-Benz Stadium, Truist Park, State Farm Arena, all of those facilities are in some form or fashion publicly funded. We have not been. The focus for this request, 100%, is to help drive events to Henry County, to help strengthen Atlanta Motor Speedway, and to help strengthen the business community within which we operate.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson.
Thank you so much for your time. Thank you, David.
Thank you. I'd like the representative from Habitat for Humanity to come up, please. Now, this would address the housing affordability that we have in the community, the need that we have in the community? Okay. So we haven't, we don't have a secure, okay, scan at this point. But she's prepared to take any questions that you may have.
I am, thank you. My name is Cynthia Jenkins. I'm the CEO of Southern Crescent Habitat for Humanity, which covers Fayette, Clayton, and Henry Counties. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Commissioners, Chair, to talk about Southern Crescent Habitat and the impact that housing, that we can have on their housing here in Henry County. We have been working with Henry County for quite some time. Habitat for Humanity was formed in 1986 and over time, we have done approximately 40 home repairs and probably 20 to 40 houses, whether that be new construction, rehab, recycles, within that time period. And one of the things about COVID-19 that we've seen is that there has been a huge increase in cost. Most of you are aware of that, that house prices have increased, material cost has increased, and affordability has decreased. So let me tell you a little bit about what we do. We do homeownership. We are not a rental. We don't provide public housing rental. We do not provide Section 8 rentals. We are helping people become homeowners in Henry County. That is what we do. And so with this funding that we are requesting, we will be able to add to the workforce housing. These are people who are working families, who are your essential workers. And we will be able to add four homes with $600,000. We'll be able to do more if we were able to allocate some funds to acquisition. As you know, most development is headed south and it's headed south quickly in the metro Atlanta area. And if we are to ensure that we'll have housing, that our members of our community, who are our essential workers, can live, work, and play in our community, then we need to make sure that we have the housing stock available for them to live in our community. And so acquisition of property is one of our goals so that many years out, we will still have the ability to build affordably. As you know, the difference between building a home in Henry County or building a home on the north side of Atlanta is largely land cost. We can still build very affordably here if we do something now. And the ARPA funds will allow us to add to that. And any other funds that we can acquire at this time towards land acquisition will help us create a brighter future for our working families here. And I did have a presentation that had some examples of what our homes look like because I want to make sure that you understand we are building quality. We are not building something that you and their community won't be proud of. My background is architecture. I majored in architecture at Georgia Tech and I've worked for some of the largest and best architecture firms in our state. And I take a lot of pride in the fact that our, our home designs are not only affordable, but they are beautiful. And I'd like to show that to you at some point if we can get that presentation. Do you have any questions for me?
Do we have any questions? Thank you. All right. Thank you.
I can have the representative from the chamber, please.
Thank you, David. Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. Representing Henry County Chamber today, our president and CEO is not able to be here today, so I'm standing in as chair of the chamber today. There were a couple of items that were presented to, that were part of the ARPA funds. And there's some that, that I know you guys are privy of, some I definitely want you to hear, hear from us about. And the first one is small business support and eventually having a small business incubator. As we know, coming out of our intergovernmental retreat, we heard that the small business community was in need. And as we know, there are a lot of small businesses that are, that are being formed today. And we heard also through previous engagements that we've had with small businesses that a lot of small businesses are not even prepared to receive funds. So what we wanted to do from the chamber is to make sure that we are able to help those small businesses. So, and that is helping our member small businesses and businesses that are not a part of the chamber as well. So we were planning a co-working space that will allow small businesses to come, come in and utilize that space. And also for our members, that would be no charge for our members. And also for non-members, they would be afforded the, the ability for a nominal fee to be able to come in and use that. We've already heard from a lot of people in our community right now that they are willing to take their time and come in, from bankers, insurance agents, everyone that's a part of the community, they're willing to share their time. So we know that small business support was one of the most, the biggest things that we've heard coming out of our intergovernmental retreat. So we wanted to make sure that we put some, some money there. You've already heard from Atlanta Motor Speedway and Mr. Hutchinson. And I know some of the funds were allocated to our C V B to help to market Atlanta Motor Speedway. I just have to say, we have a world-class facility, as you guys already know, with Atlanta Motor Speedway and the new enhancements that they've just made. And, you know, we'll, we'll definitely use those funds in order to market that and to get that out to, to, to the world, really, because this is a world-class facility right here in Henry County and we want to make sure that we do a great job in supporting them. And those are the items that, that I have right now that, that I've been privy of that's a part of this list, so I welcome any questions.
Any questions from any of the Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I have two more, one's from the Sheriff's Office and the next would be from the Clerk of Superior Court.
David, can you make sure that you get copies of all these presentations so that we can share, so that the board, each, each board member can have the opportunity to review what is being presented today?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Madam Chair, distinguished board members. I'm Mike Yarwood, the Chief Deputy for Henry County Sheriff's Office here to represent our Sheriff, Skandret. So I'm going to try not to bore you with all the numbers today, but I do want to hit you with one that I think is absolutely essential. It's a huge. It's a huge number, the number two. In January of 2021, we lost two of our staff to COVID-19. It just helps to bring that home to how very important it is that we take these funds, take them seriously, and how we deploy them across all of our strategies, all of our areas of operation, to make all of us safer, internal and our external partners. So, to our COVID protocol and how we're looking at trying to use the funding going forward for ARPA. When we came on staff in January 2021, we were really caught off-guard with a lacking of a COVID protocol within the organization. We had to develop a lot of things from the ground up. So, that cost us more than almost $70,000 in just PPE, such as gloves, masks, respirators, the basics that people need within our organization to conduct business. We had staff using food gloves, service gloves, to search some of our prisoners. We all know that's not something that would be normal. We developed a protocol. We identified the PPE and the equipment. We brought on things such as our aerosol sprays, the electrostatic spraying of fogger machines, to be able to conduct those type of operations, to disinfect our vehicles, our pods where we house our inmates and care for them, as well as other office areas that we take care of. Again, a little over $67,000 initially, and that cost will continue to go each and every year, and it's rising as we move forward. Another thing that really brings to the home is our medical care and mental health care to our inmate population. When we have these folks housed within our jail, that constitutional mandate is for a care that is expected for a human being. Irrespective of what someone has or has not committed an act of criminality, that's not our job to deal with. We are caring for what they need medically, mental, and dental. So, what we saw through the COVID-19 crisis is a drastic increase in the price that we can even get a contract in. At the end of 2021, we had to bring our RFP to bear, and we were only able to get two vendors that could even come close to be able to provide the services that we were needing. And that service, we were at about a $2.7 million budget, and they come in almost $2 million over that to be able to provide the services that we expect and be able to move to the point where we want to go in the future to give that care to our inmates. What we were able to accomplish was bring that into about a 3.6... Overall, $3.6 million new contract that brought in a medical director, psychiatric help full-time, so that we had more ability to treat folks that are experiencing these issues and help reduce that recidivism, as well as try to get more people out of the jail, so we're not continuing to have that COVID-19 overhaul... That crisis inside that's causing these contractions of the disease. We were able to develop many other protocols that assist within those things. So, we looked at about a $1.1 million increase that's impacted us going forward for that as well. I think everybody comes to you and talks about personnel staffing over time, but it's real. Let's think about it from a perspective of COVID-19. In the jail, we housed, when we came onboard, about 350 to 400 persons per day. We are now at about 650 on average daily population. Stark increase. That increase increases the staffing levels that we need. It increases the level of possibility of inmates and our own staff contracting coronavirus and other illnesses. How do you mitigate those things? Well, the problem is, it's exasperated further when you have people contracting or being exposed. Our staff have to be quarantined or isolated. When that occurs, the overtime increases because we have to bring in other persons from the field, from the courts, to take those positions that are no longer available for the ones we've had to isolate. Furthermore, as we do the laundry, sounds pretty easy, but we've had to double our laundry details to ensure that we're not transporting or transmitting the virus from pod to pod to pod. As we look at these type of issues, again, try not to bore you with too many numbers, in just six months alone, we were over 2... About 230, 240% of our overtime budget ended up with $503,000, $586,000. We're averaging over $83,000 a month in overtime expenses. Again, that's one of the needs that we have, is to be able to offset that. But it takes me to my next point, is the COVID impact is not just the overtime. As we heard from our distinguished person from Piedmont, Henry, recruiting and retaining people to work in this COVID environment is very difficult. When you're asking people who, I would argue, inside the jail, our professional staff are some of the most frontline workers, when you're with 650 persons, and many of which have contracted this COVID disease, the impact is great. Remember my number two. We lost two. So, to recruit and retain, we're looking at how can we compensate our staff for being those frontline workers impacted each day, inside and outside of our jail operations, field, court, et cetera, to ensure that we provide the proper coverage, the right safety across all areas of our responsibility, and reduce that overtime as we move forward. Another impact that we had was when we came onboard, we identified our surveillance camera system was not adequate to the system that we need. So, we found things that were inoperable, broken cameras, lacking coverage, et cetera. So, just to say a few things about that, is we need to bring that back up to par. Why would that impact COVID-19? What does that have to do with it? So, what we look at is that this is one of the ways that you increase your ability to identify where we have gatherings, lack of social distancing, and then we're able to really initiate our contact tracing at a much detailed level. When you can... Because again, who do you... Do you remember who you were around 10 minutes ago, three days ago, four days ago, when we started doing the contact tracing? Probably not. But with the camera system deployed appropriately, we're able to see these things and be able to impact that disease even further as we work in our court system and hope to get that open back up to full operations. It also provides evidence-based community violence intervention strategies. We're able to look at some of the evidence-based activities, such as what we call hot files, or when we have persons that are wanted, or cars and tags, et cetera. We're able to see these things throughout our system, be able to deploy that and address it accordingly. Something that's over between $500,000 and $700,000 in the increase for that system. One of the other things that's very important, as you're housing 650 persons each day in close proximity in housing units, pods, general quarters, et cetera, they're going to be together. They're breathing the same air. As we know, a jail is not really the most ventilated type of facility by design. How do we address that? Well, we're researching now on a couple of ways to put into place an HVAC system that has... Or modify our HVAC system with HEPA filtration and having a consistent running of the fan, so that we can remove and replace the air as much as possible. There's other... The other solution is using portable stations for HEPA filtration and UV disinfection, where that's going to be able to put into each of the pods and maybe have a lower cost value on that, which we're looking at somewhere between $50,000 and $60,000 plus to be able to improve those conditions. The more that we can remove the air, filtrate the air, and get ventilation within our jail, we've identified those as issues that we can definitively impact our COVID crisis. And we must. So, those are just a few things to touch on, what we're needing. And if I can answer any questions, I'd be glad to, and I'm open there.
Commissioners, have any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thanks, sir.
Ms. Hill here? Yes, Ms. Hill here.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Distinguished Members of the Board. I come to you today to request funding for a scanning and digitization project that is needed in the Clerk's Office for a very long time. As you know, the Clerk's Office maintains records which date back to 1823. And this scanning and digitization project will focus on three main goals, especially during this pandemic and while we are all facing issues with COVID-19. This scanning project will help to reduce public traffic in the county office and in our Superior Court, which assists to spread or reduce the spread of COVID-19, facilitate remote work options for staff when needed, if they contract or are exposed to COVID-19, and increases the public access to records, especially for citizens that are high-risk to COVID-19 and are unable to come into the office. According to OCGA 15661, Subsection 5, it is the Clerk of Superior Court's duty to keep all books, papers, dockets, and records belonging to the office with care and security. In addition to the public health concerns caused by this pandemic, this project will further help to prevent damage that is occurring to records that are being destroyed by rodents, climate, and temperature ailments. These conditions are unsafe for our employees to go and retrieve records, to make copies when people come in to request these copies. As you know, we are essential workers in the Clerk's Office, and so, this project will greatly not only help the citizens of Henry County, but they will help the workers and the staff of the Clerk of Superior Court. I have requested the amount that I requested of $1,4,818.22 to complete a four-phase project, which would take approximately six months of 24-hour, seven... 24-hour, seven-days-a-week project onsite by individuals who have completed background checks and who are cleared to be in Superior Court. The reason why this scanning project is different from a lot of other scanning projects, and it is very specific to the Clerk's needs, is because we need to have our images and files to be not just scanned, but also to be indexed by searchable fields. And that is by case number, by party name, defendants' names, document types, dates. Minors' names and social security numbers also have to be redacted during this project. They need to be grouped, they're multi-page documents, grouped together, cropped to remove access borders for images, such as the books that need to be scanned. We have a lot of deed books, plaque books, lien books, et cetera. And then, the quality of our documents that have poor and damaged quality from some of the issues that I've already explained need to be enhanced, and that is also included in this. And we have to be able to have this done where it... Where these records can not only be scanned, but they can be imported into our current case management system, which is Tyler Technologies. So, in order to have everything indexed, imported, so that we can have access and give access to our citizens and to those who seek copies of their records, I am asking that you all make consideration for this project. Do you all have any questions?
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to have some of our largest stakeholders come up and make presentation and be able to respond to any questions, were there any. I'd like to continue, because I haven't met with all District Commissioners, to attempt to have those meetings before the meeting on the 15th. I'd like to bring back to you a resolution at that time to approve a recommended... These are the requested lists right now. I'd like to bring before you a recommended list, so that we can approve it on expenditure of the stimulus funds on the 15th of February, and then begin distribution of those funds the following month. What questions do you have of me?
Commissioner Clement, yes?
David, with the five primary areas that the ARPA funds can be used, I would like to see where you take all of these things that have come before us in the recommendations and go through them and make sure that they absolutely fit up under the five primary areas, especially when it comes to broadband and infrastructure. It was very specific in the ARPA criterias what that was. And I think some of these things that have come before us do not fit. And they may fit from an umbrella perspective, but when you narrow it down to specifically what the ARPA is supposed to be used for, I don't think all of them fit. Some of them may better be served in our budget and coming up under our budget improvements or our budget increases, but I really want you to check. So, when we meet, because we haven't, I want to be very clear that I don't... That, you know, if you think they do, then let's discuss that, but I don't think all of them fall up under ARPA.
Yes, ma'am.
And to follow up on what Commissioner Clement just said, if we could make sure that we have the presentations that were presented today and other presentations that may come along with other requests that we have received, so that we can understand, and maybe, I don't know if they can be put in the categories as what Commissioner Clement had just stated, what far as the ARPA funds, what they can be used or utilized for. But I think that it would help us to be able to, I guess, see exactly what the best fit would be and the best way to disperse these funds. So, if we can just make sure that we have the presentations, the dollar amount, the budget, everything that goes along with that prior to our February 15th meeting, then I think that that can help us, you know, so this board can get together and make a concerted effort to do what's best for Henry County.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation will be the employee presentation and discussion only for employee pay increase. If we can have HR Director Harold Cooper, Anita Campbell, and any others that will be presenting.
Good morning again, Madam Board, Chair, and Distinguished Board Members. I come before you again today, like I did December 14th, to talk with you all about potential pay increases for our employees. The one good part about this presentation this morning is that I've received feedback from various Board of Commissioners, and I'd like to share the different scenarios that have been shared with me in a reference for... In an effort for us to work together. As I stated in our initial Board meeting, inflation is at an all-time high. If we're not affording our employees a 5.4% increase, then we're all essentially walking through the corridors of Henry County Departments, taking a pay cut. Also, I shared with you all, from January 2019 to December 2021, we lost 765 employees. 554 of those employees resigned, and that makes up 72% who served as resignations. As a result of that, we took a sample pool of the 554, and we looked at 151 exit interviews and found that 48 of those employees left for better paid workforce opportunities. And as a result of that, that's 31.8%. Round that off, that's 32%. And that's 32% of employees leaving too many, in my opinion, as the Human Resources Director here. So, as a result of the... So as a result of the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two board meeting, Chair charged staff with providing the Board of Commissioners with the initial plan and proposal, which we did on January twentieth, as well as a financial analysis report done by my esteemed colleague, Ms. Campbell, to support Scenario One, which was a ten-point-five percent increase across the board. Since then, I've received feedback from various board members. And actually, before then, I received feedback on different possible scenarios. So today, we'll go over the different scenarios. Scenario one, as I just explained, was ten-point-five percent. Scenario two is a tiered approach where there would be ten percent given to those individuals who make fifty thousand or less, seven percent to those employees who make fifty thousand one dollars up through to seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cent. And the three percent COLA would be received by those employees that make eighty thousand and more. Scenario three is a scenario in which seven-point-five percent increase would be given across the board to all employees. And Scenarios Four and Five would call for public safety receiving a twenty percent increase and non-public safety receiving either a six percent increase or eight percent increase. We're going to look at the logistics of these different scenarios and how it can impact the county. Let's look at the tiered approach first. As I just mentioned, I had opportunity to meet with Commissioner Holmes. I want to thank you for taking time out of your schedule. And he recommended a tiered approach. The tiered approach is as follows, as I just mentioned. Those individuals who make fifty thousand or less would receive ten percent. Those individuals that make more than fifty thousand but less than eighty thousand would receive seven percent. And those individuals that make eighty thousand and up would receive three percent.
What was also included was the recommendation for a pay study in this particular scenario. I think that's probably the most important piece of that, a pay study, so we can find out where everybody is in the spectrum and then correct pay for all the employees across the board.
Correct, and I will speak to that as well. Now, when we look at this criteria by the numbers, you'll see the employees that will receive ten percent, the total impact would be five-point-seven million. When you look at the employees that will receive seven percent, that's a little under two-point-nine million. And then when you look at the employees that will receive eighty percent, the three percent that makes eighty thousand, they'll receive four-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand in terms of total impact. So when you look at a full-year impact of such a tiered approach, you're looking at close to nine-point-seven million dollars. If you look at it from a six-month perspective, you're looking at four-point-eight million dollars. Let's look at this approach by the numbers in terms of the number of employees. Nine-hundred-and-thirty-eight employees, based on this scenario, will receive a ten percent increase, which makes up fifty-nine percent of the full-time workforce. Part-time employees would be two-hundred-and-twenty employees that would receive this. And when we look at full-time employees that will receive seven percent, it would be five-hundred-and-thirty-nine employees, which makes up thirty-four percent of the full-time workforce. Full-time employees that will receive the three percent that makes over eighty thousand would be a hundred-and-seventy, twenty-seven employees, excuse me, which makes up seven percent of the full-time workforce. So when we look at it in its totality, you have approximately ninety-three percent of the full-time workforce that will receive either ten percent or seven percent collectively. Whilst a valiant effort to look at it from a tiered approach, one of the pitfalls that could potentially happen with this approach is pay compression. And pay compression occurs when salaries of individuals in the same job or salaries between supervisor and subordinate are too small to be considered equitable. Pay compression is a common trend, and it causes inequities across all pay systems, whether it's public and private sector. So we have to be mindful of that. And the next few slides will show some of the potential pay compressions with this scenario. Let's look at our firefighter department for a second. If you look here, you'll see firefighter A, which is a grade sixteen, has been employed with us since April ninth, twenty oh-seven, and currently makes forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents. So he or she would be eligible for that ten percent increase. But if you look at firefighter B, grade sixteen, has been employed with us since October twenty-fourth of two thousand and five, and currently makes fifty thousand dollars, they would be eligible for the seven percent increase. And if you look at firefighters B tenure, they've been here longer than firefighter A. So when you look at the new salaries with this approach, firefighter A's new salary would be fifty-four thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and forty-six cents. Firefighters B new salary with the seven percent increase would be fifty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars. So in essence, firefighter B went from making five hundred dollars or more to now making one thousand dollars less than firefighter A. So that's one of the potential pitfalls when it comes to pay compression with a tiered approach.
Harold, can you tell us, since you run this data, can you tell us the number of employees that will run into the compression issue?
I don't have a total number, but these are actual employees that we've pulled, so.
Yeah, but I need to know, because I think that, I think that number will be few. And that's the reason why we need to move forward with the, with the pay study. Because the pay study will correct whatever, whatever issues we may have with compression. I don't think we're going to see that many patients over the next, I mean, not patients, but employees over the next, over the next few months before we actually move into the next budget, budget session.
But we have currently now probably close to a hundred employees that this could potentially affect, right? And then we're just looking at the ten percent and seven percent right now. I think you also have to keep in mind the seven percent and how that translates with the three percent.
Yeah, but give me the actual number of employees, that's what I need.
I can get you those numbers, but any pay compression, if we can avoid a pothole, you know, let's avoid a pothole.
So I think, I think what we're doing here, we're trying to, we're trying to get raises to those employees that need the raises the most. We have many employees that have been stuck in the twenties, thirties, and forty-thousand-dollar ranges. So I think getting those employees the relief they need is most important at this particular point. If we move forward with this compression or this pay study, it should only take a couple of months, and then we'll know exactly what each individual employee deserves in terms of salary increase.
And I hear you, sir, and all due respect. If we can just get through the various scenarios, any questions or marching orders the board may have, we're more than willing to listen to and acquiesce to as needed. So if you look at a pay grade eighteen here with our deputy three sheriff's office, you'll see, again, the compression, how employee A, who makes forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and employee B, who makes fifty thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars, who has been here longer, would be subjected to a pay compression where employee B would now be making four-hundred-and-seventeen dollars less. And this is pay grade eighteen. There's a similar example here with our police department as well, with their Investigator One series. So we're looking at the different job classes, and we're finding this just with our random samples here. But what's most alarming about this is the supervisor-to-subordinate relationship. And you'll see that with this next slide. Our E-nine-one-one department, we have an E-nine-one-one dispatcher who is a grade fifteen that makes forty-nine thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. And we have an E-nine-one-one shift supervisor, grade eighteen, that makes fifty thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. When we apply the ten percent to the employee A, that employee now makes fifty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars. And when we apply the seven percent to employee B, that employee makes fifty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars. There's a seven dollars difference between a supervisor and a subordinate there. And there's a three-grade pay differential there, pay grade fifteen, pay grade eighteen. So again, this approach, we have to be mindful of such pitfall. The next approach is the recommendation by the chair in which public safety would receive twenty percent and non-public safety would receive either eight percent or six percent. Let's start with the twenty-eight scenario. The total impact as it relates to public safety from a financial standpoint would be thirteen-point-eight million dollars. The total impact as it relates from a non-public safety standpoint would be four-point-one million dollars. So we're looking at a grand total here of eighteen million dollars in terms of impact. If we look at it from the six percent approach, we're looking at that same thirteen-point-eight million for public safety. And then we're looking at three-point-one million from non-public safety, which is a total of seventeen million dollars of full-year impact. In addition to the scenario, we looked at and we conducted salary surveys with different public safety departments and municipalities as it relates to police officers and sheriff officers. In comparison with those eleven municipalities, Henry County ranks last in terms of competitive pay. Henry County's starting salary was less than each of the municipalities as well. And the next few slides will show that. Here, you could see where there were raises provided to ten different municipalities. These pay increases ranged from three-point-five percent to twenty percent. DeKalb County Sheriff's Office gave three-point-five percent December twenty twenty-one. Sandy Springs Police Department gave twenty percent September twenty twenty-one. And we put Stockbridge Police Department in as a twelfth municipality to show that their starting salary, there's about a twelve-point-five percent difference in their starting pay compared to our current starting pay of forty-three-four. They're going to be at forty-eight, eight, and some change there.
Harold, you compare anything else, like health benefits and those type of things compared to those other counties as well? I mean, pay isn't everything.
We haven't looked at the total rewards yet, but we're looking at pay. And I think what's also important here, Commissioner Holmes, is out of the twelve municipalities here, we're ranked fourth in population. So I think that needs to be considered, but we will look at total reward as well. As I stated before on our December fourteenth meeting, the national average is right around fifty thousand dollars for starting pay. And as you can see, again, we're trending last on this bar graph. Okay, this, I apologize for this slide, but this slide shows the difference in the non-public safety pay as it relates to municipalities. And it's not showing up well. But I can tell you that with the planning department, we're currently ranked fourth. And the building department, we're currently ranked second. And then the firefighter and police departments, we're ranked third when it comes to pay. And those municipalities are City of Locust Grove, Clayton, Rockdale, Cherokee. So in regards to the twenty percent versus six percent or twenty percent versus eight percent pay increase, the one reservation that we have with that, the potential pay disparity may cause employee morale issues, you know? Because again, we currently have three-hundred-and-six vacancies. Thirty-six of those vacancies are in DOT. And if we have a storm or a national disaster of any kind, I know that public safety is going to be out there, but I also know that if we have any trees or anything that breaks down, our DOT department would need to be out there as well. So that's important to take heed to. As you all know, our initial proposal from a staff perspective was a set increase across the board of ten-point-five percent. One similar suggestion was Scenario Three, where Commissioner Wilson raised a proposal of seven-point-five percent increase across the board for all employees, so.
Harold, can you also, can you also include the COLA? So the ten-point-five percent would actually have been thirteen-point-five percent if you include the COLA increase.
The COLA, the COLA as of July, yes. But we were talking about real time right then and there because of the need right then and there. So it was not like we were excluding the COLA, but we were talking about real time as we need it because of the needs and because of the trends of inflation. So when you look at all of the proposals in this totality, the ten-point-five percent, the total impact would have been thirteen-point-one million dollars. The tiered approach would have been right at nine-point-seven million dollars of total impact. The seven-point-five percent increase would have been right at nine-point-three percent million dollars total impact. And Scenarios Four and Five would have been seventeen-point-one million if we did twenty percent, six percent, and eighteen million if we did twenty percent and eight percent. I yield at this time for any questions. Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Clements.
Commissioner Clements, go ahead.
You know, Harold, maintaining a strong salary structure is very important, you know, to me. I want you to know that, first of all. But you brought up a couple of things in reference to pay compression, and I really want our county attorney to be attentive on this. Whether it's the tiered approach or the twenty percent or the seven-point-five, that pay compression could come into play. It is most likely the best practice of any human resource department to do the class and comp study. And then we're supposed to do it every three to five years. That's a policy that I asked for when we first discussed this that still hasn't been addressed. We don't have a policy in place where that class and comp study, unless Sharon can tell me otherwise, that it should be done on a regular basis. It's been more than three years since it's been done. The class and comp study is going to do a couple of things. It's going to, one, it's going to make sure that we're in compliance with state and federal laws to avoid pay compression. The other thing that it's going to do is going to make sure that we're competitive, not only from other counties, but based on the industry that the employees are in, based on the geographic location of our county. And it's going to make sure that we're in compliance across the board. So whatever we do, we still need to make sure that we have a class and comp study. And I prefer to either quickly have the last one that we did updated, sharing, or let's just do another one, because that way we avoid all pitfalls. I understand the urgency of getting money into the hands of people, but we still have to do what is fiducially responsible and make sure that we stay out of lawsuits that we can avoid with this pay compression. So it doesn't matter, you guys are experts when it comes to human resources. You know, I've had employees for twenty-nine years. You have to be able to support anything that you do. And the way to support it is a class and comp study. If the class and comp study comes- If the class and comp study comes back and say that we need to give everybody twelve percent, guess what we have to do? We have to do twelve percent. When we did the class and comp study, we did not bring everybody up where they were supposed to be. We took some people up, some people didn't. We changed people around based on their categories. A lot of stuff happened during that time. We need to redo the class and comp study quickly, swiftly, immediately, and give the people what they're supposed to have. And I will stand by that. Doing these different raises is going to still create havoc if we don't have the class and comp study.
I hear you loud and clear, Commissioner Clemens, and I appreciate you recognizing us as HR experts and financial savants. As you know, she won an award, her team won an award. We do plan on opening it up for a phase-two class and comp study. I've had four consultants reach out to me personally in reference to that. However, dealing with the now, I think is critical, because we have three hundred and six vacancies. You know, I have thirty-six vacancies in DOT. I have twenty-six vacancies in the fire department. So, we can do something now. Working together works. If the Board of Commissioners can come together and find out which one of these scenarios could be the best-fit approach now, we can move forward and at least stop the bleeding, and then we can fix the other concerns. But right now, three hundred and six vacancies are a lot of vacancies for a municipality that has two hundred and forty-four thousand citizens.
You still don't address how you avoid the pay compression with any of those. All of those, every last one of those scenarios can have a potential, as you stated.
No, but as the human resources pantheon figure before you, the set increase amount will not cause pay compression, ma'am. It will not.
So, you could do a...
The tiered approach will.
So, you could do a five percent across the board with everybody and be okay and avoid a pay compression?
It can avoid a pay compression.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Presentation. Quick question, the ARPA money, can we use that for salaries incentive pay?
I can't speak to the ARPA funds. And in terms of the class and comp policy, we do have it. It's in our updated manual that we've been trying to get passed.
So, David, can you speak on whether or not ARPA funds can be utilized for pay?
I'll begin with, we do not recommend that you use ARPA funds for pay that's recurring. ARPA funds should be used for one-time expenses, not recurring expenses.
Some more questions, the reason I ask a question. So, it seems to be a question of percentages or raises, what program to go to to give everybody a raise? I think everybody is on the agreeing that we need a class and comp study update. I think it's been three years. Is there any way we can use those funds to give every employee a two hundred and fifty dollar every bi-weekly for five months until we get the class and comp study back? And then we'll adjust pay as needed that comes out of the general fund?
You can use those funds that way for premium pay, but the premium pay or the incentives would be for those first responders, which are public safety and EMS first. It wouldn't address all employees.
Okay.
So, I just, we listened to the CEO of Piedmont earlier, and she talked about the great resignation. That's happening all around the country. That's just not happening in Henry County. So, we need to look at our overall comp package. You can't compare us to Rockdale County. Rockdale County only covers fifty percent of the insurance. We cover eighty, and sometimes we cover a hundred percent.
But I can't compare us to them. But they're a neighboring county, and we're competing against them for people.
Yeah, but it's the whole package.
It is the whole package.
So, if I'm at Henry County, if I'm making five thousand dollars less than somebody over in Rockdale, but Henry County is covering a hundred percent, ninety percent of my insurance, I'm not going to go over there and have them cover fifty percent?
But after the fact, Mr. Holmes, I'm in my role to be a conscientious objector to the Great Recession, I mean, Great Resignation. I'm paid to bring people in here. I'm paid to bring people in here that are going to work at a high level. And I understand exactly what you're saying. I understand exactly what you're saying, sir. We're going to look at the total reward, but I'm talking about the now. And how can we deal with the now? When every other municipality in the state of Georgia are doing some type of increase?
It's going to be, it's a never-ending cycle. You know, somebody else will go up, and then you'll be coming back to us saying, hey, man, we need a twenty percent raise. And we're going to keep adding a burden onto the taxpayers, because these raises aren't going to pay for themselves. Eventually, we're going to have to increase the millage rate. And if you're telling me that we're going to pay for this with growth, it's not going to happen. You just said inflation was an issue, which it is. We're at the highest in forty years.
But I think we all can agree that an increase is needed. You would have never broke...
Yeah, I support an increase.
You would have never brokered your...
I support, I support an increase, but I want to make sure...
Your scenario.
I want to make sure that the increase doesn't burden the taxpayers.
And it will not, because I just gave you the total impact.
Okay, so, we have other commissioners. Let's go with Commissioner Thomas, Commissioner Clemens, and then Commissioner Wilson again. Let's give everybody an opportunity.
Thank you, HR, for your presentation, and thank you for outlining the different scenarios that were presented by commissioners. And it is so refreshing to see there's more than one way to do this. And that's what we were looking for before instead of just one way. One of the things I do want to ask you to do is go back and still look at ways to do pay grades for our public safety somewhere either based upon certifications, which they told me they're required to get. I didn't realize there were so many different certifications that police and firemen have to get. So, that's one thing. Versus the degrees as well, because everybody doesn't go to college, everybody doesn't have a degree. But there are other ways to put those incentives in there. Another thing, you were talking about the compression. There are ways to get around that compression threshold, and it's called some form of incentive, maybe on quarterly basis, for leaders in those areas, like you said, your supervisors and managers. You need a threshold big enough to identify this as a supervisor's position, as a manager's position, of someone in authority. You don't want seven dollars to be there, even a thousand dollars to be there. But we can do that on some form of merit evaluation on a quarterly basis. We can do it on performance of the department for that person. And those can be raises, not raises, they can be incentives or bonuses or merit pays of three thousand, four thousand a quarter. And that will give you that big difference between the subordinate and their supervisor position. And it's also an incentive for that cluster leader or that supervisor manager to make sure their department is performing at a high level, because it's tied to their bonus for that time period or their merit pay. So, there's a way to get through that compression that you're concerned about and not have it haunt you from there on. We want to get to the end of this. We want to find a way to give these employees monies that's due to them. I hear you loud and clear. I am on board to giving out these increases as needed. I am on board if we have to do the fourteen and fifteen, we have to do it. But I will go back to what we've stated. We need a study. We need that study to help us. I have yet to see the complete study of what the first one did. And you did send me a summary, sir. I saw the summary, it was real pretty, but it did not have the detailed information in it that I needed by categories to make a good decision as to where we are to go, okay? So, we need that information to qualify our decisions. We need it. And when we get that information, we can use it to reward the citizens, not the citizens, our employees for the work that they do for this county. Now, immediately, there are some immediate things we can do. You said stop the bleeding, help us stop the bleeding. We have COVID funds, COVID funds that we can give out for those who have been vaccinated, trying to get vaccinated, worked during the pandemic, couldn't work during the pandemic. If it was COVID-related, we can start giving out those thousand-dollar checks, and it will not impact our budget. It will not impact where we're going. It will not impact anything. We have COVID dollars available. And I'm going to say to this Board of Commissioners, to let the employees know that we are working in their behalf, just use those funds, because it does not bother our general fund. It does not cost the county directly anything. Let's use the COVID dollars to start giving out these dollars to our employees who are working consistently through this pandemic. And that will at least let them know they're working on it. Here's what we can do now until we get to that end piece. But thank you for your presentation. I do want that additional information for public safety. And we need to consider something that we don't like to talk about, we don't like to talk about. But we may have to consider, to maintain the dollars that we're talking about being competitive, some type of one-third of a penny tax for public safety only. Let me say that again, for public safety only. And we don't like to put out taxes. We don't want to do it, but other people are doing that in their communities, because communities will embrace supporting public safety more than they do anything else. And if they know it's going to public safety only, we may have to have you put together some numbers with other support to see what that would do. But thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clemens, go ahead.
I'm going to go back to the same thing that I stated at the first meeting that you all presented to us. The thousand dollars that we were trying to give to people that were vaccinated, I said that we should do a thousand dollars to every employee across the board, which complies with what Commissioner Wilson just said. It would have been four months of an additional two fifty. That's the same thing a thousand dollars would equal to while we do the class and comp study. Had we started that class and comp study when I stated that, we would have a class and comp study. Had we updated it when I stated it, we would have a class and comp study. The class and comp study is the only thing. All of us got opinions. Our opinions doesn't matter. What matters that this board should be concerned about is are we in compliance with state and federal laws when giving raises? And are we competitive with our local region and making sure that everybody get what they're supposed to have? The class and comp study is in place for a reason. We should do the thousand dollars to every employee, whether we break it up to two fifty every pay period over the next four months. Do the class and comp study. That way, we take out Commissioner Holmes' opinion, Thomas, Clemens, Wilson, and our chair, and we have facts to base it on. Even if the class and comp study says that we're supposed to give the raises of ten, fifteen, twenty, we have to go by that. The class and comp study is what we need to do, and we can do an immediate fix by doing a thousand dollars or whatever we got in the monies to do. You all need to go back and think about what we can do, and let's do the class and comp study and give the people what they deserve.
Excuse me, if I may. Thank you. We've heard all of the comments loud and clear. There are a few things that I've heard that I think is important that we provide you all direct responses to. First, please know that the class and comp study was completed in twenty nineteen. We have been, HR, under the leadership of Mr. Cooper, has been diligently working to provide updates to that. It is in the policy that was brought before the board on a couple of occasions. We look to have that approved so that we can move forward and do exactly what you all are requesting us to do. Additionally, there were a hundred and thirteen employees that did not get those increases in twenty nineteen. Ninety-nine of those have already been addressed. It's been taken care of. The fourteen that are remaining are directors, and they are being reviewed under a more scronyate process to ensure that it is in line with the market and across the board for Henry County directors. Those are being reviewed individually. Everything that you are bringing to our attention, trust. We hear you, and we are working towards those. We are right at year three on that class and comp plan. The presentation for any updates will be brought before you all to make those updates. The first thing we need is that policy to be approved, and we can move forward with that.
Wilson, speak.
She's responding to me, can I just say something about what she's saying? Shannon, I know that I got, my first seat was in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. The class and comp study had been done when I came on board. That's not, hold on, let me finish. Class and comp study had been done before I came on board. There were some changes that may have made, that you all may have made, that ended in twenty nineteen, but I want to go back and pull the resolution where this board voted for the class and comp study, and it was prior to twenty nineteen.
I think we may have voted for the RFP as far as the purchasing process, but the class and comp study was not done and implemented that early. I was actually the interim HR director, starting in April of twenty nineteen, when we brought those pay increases before the board. So, those pay increases did not take effect until, I believe, summer of twenty nineteen.
So, let's correct that. The pay did not take effect until twenty nineteen, but the class and comp study was done prior to twenty nineteen, and we voted on it prior to twenty nineteen.
That may very well be possible, but not prior to twenty seventeen, Commissioner.
I just want to say that I want to make sure that a three- to five-year comp plan, twenty nineteen, was not when that comp plan was completed by the person that was awarded the contract and presented to us. Twenty nineteen was when you probably implemented the pay, but that's not when the class and comp study, the study was done.
Understood. And there were a lot of delays in the study. We actually lost a consultant. There were a lot of delays in the study.
Just want to make sure, because now I'm thinking about when the study was completed by the consultant, that day, and it's time to redo it, because when that study was completed, it's been more than three years, or maybe it's right at three years, okay? So, it is time to redo it, because that study was done twenty sixteen, seventeen. It actually started before I got elected, okay? The study started. So, let's not debate it here. I think staff needs to go back, because I respect you all's opinion, but I want facts. Y'all just go back, take a look at when the consultant started, when did they finish the study? When was it presented to the county? Because even when it was presented to the county, the county went back and forth with them. Like, all that happened more than three years ago. So, it's time to redo it.
That is in the process.
Thank you.
So, let me go back to the seven and a half percent that Mr. Cooper said that I recommended. And the reason I recommended that was because when they, we talked about the ten and a half percent for the, across the board, which I totally, I do support the ten and a half percent. And then we heard that we can't afford that, we're going to bankrupt the county, we have to go up on the millage rate. So, then when I read that Commissioner Holmes wanted to do the ten, seven, and three, I did the quick math on that, and that was going to be around the ten, nine and a half million dollars. So, I said, well, seven and a half is close to what he presented, but it's across the board for everyone. So, I don't want people to misread what I'm saying. I do support the ten and a half, but I was trying to come with equal grounds for people's concerns about what it's going to cost and how it's going to bankrupt the county, but we know that's not going to happen. So, that's why I said the seven and a half until we can get the pay study done. But if we're not going to do the seven and a half, I'd like to see the ARPA funds put into play for public safety and use general funds to maybe for the other employees until we can come for a pay study to be presented to us before July first.
Well, this is for discussion only. We're not taking any motions.
Me making a motion, I just want to make a motion for the ten and seven along with the class and comp study.
Nancy.
This item is on the calendar for presentation and discussion only. It's not an action item in order to vote on it for a motion.
But we can make it, we can make it an action item if we have the majority of the board. I mean, we've always done that. So, I mean, it doesn't make, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Well, it's not an action item on the agenda.
I want to make a motion for the ten...
So, what can happen in this circumstance is...
Along with the, along with the comp study. That's the motion I'm making right now.
I just want to say that's not a legitimate motion, just because of the fact that this is on the agenda for presentation and discussion only. It's not on the consent agenda, and it's not on the regular agenda for...
All the board has to do, we just need, we just need three commissioners to support me making a motion.
In order to change the agenda?
To provide these raises to the citizens.
In order to change the agenda, according to the ordinance, a new item can only be added to the agenda when it's necessary.
So, this is necessary. I can't think of, I can't think of no other reason why this wouldn't be necessary.
Well, necessary as to the action, the item has to be voted on today. And I think there's not a deadline or any necessity in this area for it to have to happen today.
I think the employees have been waiting for a month or two for this to happen. And I think if you ask the majority of the board if they would support me making a motion, I think you would have the majority of the board raise their hand. So, I will, I'm asking if we can make a motion to provide these pay raises to our employees, especially the employees that need it most.
What I'm saying is, and I can only, this is only the only agenda for presentation and discussion only.
I know what this is on the agenda for.
Right. And so, because it's not an... And so because it's not an action item...
We've had this issue for years, and we've been able to make motions on this, on this particular board. So I'm asking if I can make a motion, make a motion to give our employees raises.
Well, if you're asking if you can make a motion on a non-action item...
The chair has all power.
If you're asking if you can make a motion on a non-action, then the answer to that question is no.
Chair, can I make a motion to give our employees raises?
Not today. This is for discussion.
Thank you.
So to wrap this up, uh, so we can move to the next item on the agenda, is Chief Armerman here? Chief, I just want to hear from you, the input that this would put on public safety with regards to the raises, because what my concern is, is that when we look at all of the different municipalities and county police departments in this area, um, we're at the bottom. And retention is important. We spent a lot of money in training and all of that, and so I guess I kind of need to hear from you, the input of how this would impact public safety if we don't do a raise.
Well, the issue is, you know, the board has given us raises. They did get us caught back up, and things, at least from the police department's standpoint, have been looking good. We definitely been able to fill positions. Fire having a little bit of a harder time, but they're, they're filling positions. The issue is with the surrounding counties around us, they've given anywhere from 5% to 20%, depending on what area is doing it. Just looking at what's coming in the door for me, we're seeing the numbers decline for new, for new applicants for sure. So yes, I mean, do the study. We've already called and asked around what other counties and other jurisdictions are doing. If we want to spend money on a study, do, do a study. Get a third party to, to look at it and see. But if you're asking me what effect, we all know that inflation has gone up. Anything that we can do for the employee, whether it's public safety or DOT, the employees need raises to keep up with inflation. That definitely has an effect, especially when all the other jurisdictions around us are giving their employees raises. So yes, it's having a direct effect on my recruiting impact for all public safety. 911, for example, they're over in Fayette, they're paying their dispatchers more than not paying cops. That has an effect on what you're gonna bring over to the county.
Thank you. Okay. So a study has been requested to, um, up, update the class and comp study. Um, I think as a board, we need to get together and have a discussion as to what we can do immediately with the raise, and then maybe come back at a later time and, but I would like between now and our next board meeting to maybe go into executive session, have a discussion about what we can agree on as a board. Because our employees need a raise. Maybe we can do something temporarily across the board. I do not want to, um, get into any type of pay compression, but I would like for this to be an action item on the agenda and on the February 15th meeting. But I would like for us to discuss it in executive session as a board, so we can come out together, united, as to what we can give, uh, our employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, I, I thought I heard you mention discussing it in executive session. I don't think that that would be a item that we can discuss in executive session unless we're gonna speak specifically to an individual personnel. So if we're talking specifically about Sherri Matthews, Stephanie Braun, we can definitely do that, but any discussion regarding countywide pay raises, we would have to do that in a public session. Um, so I just wanted to, and Nancy can certainly correct me on that, but I wanted to just clarify that. Yes, sir. You all, we can have three-on-threes, one-on-ones, two-on-twos. So if you all want to do that, we can definitely do that.
And I would like to do that with the commissioners.
Okay. So two-on-twos, three-on-threes? What?
No, we can't do three-on-threes. As of now, we only have a five-member board.
Sorry. So, okay. Staff will work to coordinate with your executive assistant on either one-on-ones, two-on, or two-on-twos with the board. But thank you, Commissioner Wilson. I quickly forgot, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, the next item on the, oh, um, one of the things, uh, we're just gonna take a break here for a minute. Uh, give us five minutes, and we'll reconvene. If I can have everyone's attention so we can get started back. Yeah, mic on. If I can ask, is, is the mic on? Okay. Can I have everyone to please sit down so that we can, uh, resume our meeting? Thank you. We're gonna have the presentation for the creation of public facility authority. If I can get Isaac, a legal counsel, Doug, to come forward.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Actually, Doug's not with us today. Courtney Rogers with Davenport Company, your financial advisors. Um, it's good seeing you all this morning. I'm gonna let Isaac kind of get into the, uh, the details, but this is a continuation of the capital improvement planning process that we started a couple of, about three years ago, 2019. Uh, we did some bonding, uh, for roof replacements, some of the very needed, um, um, capital items that the county needed to get done. So we've exhausted some of the things we can do under the existing... under the existing ways that we can go out and incur debt. So one of the new ways that we're bringing forward here is creating a public facilities authority. It would be basically would cover a lot of the things that we need to do going forward. So I'm gonna turn it over to Isaac and let him speak to the things that incorporate that. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good to see you all. Just wanted to go over just the reasons why cities and counties create public facilities authorities and other types of public authorities. Here's just a description just showing that municipal bonds are generally divided into two general categories. You have general obligation bonds, which are secured by the general revenues of the county, including its ad valorem taxes. And then you have revenue bonds, which are secured by a specific stream of revenues, often the revenues of a project being financed. Revenue bonds may also be payable from receipts under a valid intergovernmental contract between two governmental entities. This just shows that entities derive, in Georgia, entities derive their authority to issue bonds from state law. Cities and counties have their authority, obtain or derive their authority to issue bonds from the Georgia Constitution. Public authorities, Georgia, in Georgia, authorities can't really issue general obligation debt or general obligation bonds. They typically issue what is referred to as revenue bonds. And they have the authority to, and they derive their authority to issue revenue bonds pursuant to local acts and the general law. Revenue bonds in Georgia are authorized to be issued under the Georgia Constitution and the revenue bond law. As you can see here, the revenue bond law grants power to issue revenue bonds to finance certain undertakings and sets out the procedure for the issuance of revenue bonds. We talked earlier about general obligation bonds, but this slide deals specifically with revenue bonds. And these are with, you know, specifically with respect to revenue bonds backed by intergovernmental contracts. The intergovernmental contracts clause of the Georgia Constitution allows cities and counties to pledge their full faith and credit and taxing power to back payment obligations under a revenue bond transaction. Some of the benefits here you can see is that bonds secure, revenue bonds secured by an intergovernmental agreement are not subject to the constitutional debt limit. And, you know, it's favorable for cities and counties that have, that use public authorities and issue revenue bonds. And also, this backing from the local government, the city or county, reduces the interest rates and provides favorable debt service payments for the authority. So on February 15th, we will prepare a draft of the act, the public act, the local act, to be considered by your delegation. And will be, you know, it's going to go before the General Assembly, but we will, this board on the 15th will consider a resolution in support of the legislation. Our firm is preparing it. And you will receive, this board will receive a draft of the legislation about a week before the meeting. And or earlier, I mean it.
And Madam Chair, I'll add to that. This is nothing new. I worked with Chatham County last year that actually went through the General Assembly and created such a public facilities authority. It's not anything new that hasn't already been done around the state. What this will allow, as Isaac was just alluding to, is that we'll be able to issue this debt using our AAA rating. So we'll get the highest and best interest rates possible if we're issuing debt under this PFA.
I think we're getting the highest rate possible now for some of the debtment of the county, are we not?
We are, yes ma'am. But this, what happens is some of the authorities that you already have that you can issue under, like the URA, doesn't allow us to do certain things. It's very specific as the types of projects that you can issue under a URA. This actually opens up and gives us other projects that we can do, such as, you've just put out RFP for the Judicial Center. Right now, we don't have a way to issue debt except for a general obligation bond for the Judicial Center. This PFA will allow us to issue debt in order to fund that project.
So what is the cost of this public facility authority to the county? There's no operating costs, like the Development Authority?
It's just like the URA. You'll appoint members, that type of thing. So there's no operating, there's not, it's not like a day-to-day operating entity. It's a conduit authority.
Operating costs to this authority?
Right, it's a conduit.
We expect that the board will appoint itself as the board of this authority. That's the expectation.
So the board can appoint itself?
Yes.
As this authority?
Yes. As the Board of Directors of the authority.
As the Board of Directors of the authority?
Right. So it'd be, you know, the same board member. It would be, the commission board would serve as the board of the public authority. Yes, Commissioner Clemens?
I think that there's a lot of discussion that needs to happen around this prior to you all presenting this to the legislation. And then I heard you say that you all are prepared to present it to the legislation with a resolution supporting it by the Henry County VOC. But I don't, so what if the VOC does not support this? Are you still gonna present it to legislation?
No, absolutely not. It would, we are presenting to you a draft resolution and the draft legislation for you to consider. And then you would approve it. And then upon your approval, we would, then your delegation at the General Assembly would, at that point, commence the process.
Has there been a conversation that you all have had with our legislators, legislators about this already?
No, not to my knowledge, no. But the process sort of commences with you looking at the legislation, being comfortable with it, providing your input, and then approving a resolution in support of it.
Because my concern would be if we appoint ourselves as the Board of Directors for the authority, what different powers would we have that we don't already have as commissioners? So you don't have to answer that now?
Oh, the powers, when you say the, are you talking about the powers that the authority would have?
Yes.
Oh, the powers that the authority is gonna have, the power to issue revenue bonds. And you're gonna be, the authority will issue these revenue bonds. And the revenue bonds will be able to obtain favorable interest rates. And the bonds will not constitute debt for state, under the state constitution. It won't be debt, it won't be the county's debt. It'll be, under the state constitution, under the debt cap, it'll be a debt of the authority. It will not be a debt of the county.
So that, I would like to have more discussion about it prior to the 15th, because if, I need to understand, how can the authority have debt?
Let me jump in, let me back up, Isaac, if I could. So this is some of the things we talked about. I know this is pre-pandemic, so it's been a long time. The ways that we have to actually fund capital projects are basically general revenues from the general fund, just revenues that are created. SPOST revenues, which you already have, and we have projects that have been identified and are being funded with SPOST. Then you've got general obligation bonds, which you'd have to go out and issue a referendum for. We have the URA that was created. But as you'll recall, we have to have a plan. Basically, it has to be sort of a blighted area that that plan has to cover. So that kind of limits us in the types of things. And judicial centers are things that does not qualify under that type of issuance. You might remember we issued debt under an installment sale agreement, but state law limits us to 25 million of real estate. So we're already there, and so we can't issue the Judicial Center under that. And then the other item is a general, there is a governmental services authority that was created some years ago. I don't think it's actually been put in service at this point. But it is limited and can't do things such as roof replacements, vehicle replacements, things like that, that can't be done. And actually, the courthouse is one of the things that can't be done under that type of, they would issue revenue bonds under that GSA. It can't be, those projects can't be done under that. So we're trying to find a way to get this Judicial Center financed. And outside of, right now, going out and do a referendum for general obligation bonds, this is the way to accomplish that. In order to accomplish that, we have to go through the General Assembly, and legislation has to be adopted to create it. And that's what Mr. Isaac's firm would be doing, is be putting that information together for you to consider. You look at on the 15th, if that's something you want to move forward with, then they would begin discussions with the delegation to get that going. But obviously the.
And you already have other revenue bond debt from other authorities? Like this, GSA, does it have obligations? What other, what, do you know what?
Well, the installment sale agreement is one of the things that we did back in 2019 when we did the roof replacements and the other projects that we had done. But we exhausted that 25 million cap that the state limits under real estate for that. So there's, we can't go and do anything else under it at this point.
So, hold on, Commissioner Holmes, I'm still, I'm still. So Doug, what I would like to see from you all is, if the legislation is approved, the next steps would be this. This is what I would do next. By this date, the county would have this, and this date you could start this construction. Without all of that, we're just continuing to create legislations and boards and authorities with no, with no plan in place. Without knowing those dates, deadlines, or where we are, we've already, we already know what our rating is, right?
Yes, ma'am.
You've already identified where the money was, Doug, three years ago. And we're still not where we were supposed to be with our Judicial Center. So we need all of that, not just, you know, this General Assembly, this happens without knowing that in July we'll be voting on the monies, in August we will start this. Because the RFP is out now, right?
The RFP is out, yes ma'am. That's what I understand, that is out, coming back on the 23rd, I believe.
Yeah, okay. So you know what we need.
Who would be our bond attorney if this legislation is approved?
Well, it would be an attorney appointed by the authority. Yeah, exactly. The authority would.
That would be bitted out, or would you guys be?
No, you would have to, the commission would approve. When I say the commission, the board of the authority would need to approve the appointment of outside counsel.
Yeah, because I'm not sure if it, if it's a conflict, if our county attorney is also the bond attorney. Can you talk more about that?
I was not, that's not, it's not my intention to, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't saying that we would be your, but I don't, let me see here if there's, if, that's a very interesting question. So I've served as issuer's counsel and bond counsel on multiple transactions before.
It's just, it's just hard for me that the county attorney is making a recommendation, and then the county attorney benefits from the legislation.
Oh, that's a, that's a, that's a point.
Yeah, I know.
But the, but the legislation is not, I guess one thing I would say is that the legislation is not to issue, like this, this legislation just gives you the flexibility to do things that you would have to approve in the future. So if we, you know, if this legislation goes to the General Assembly, then you, again, would have to approve anything. Each additional, each, any and all transactions would have to be approved by the board of this authority. Bonds, intergovernmental agreements, appointment of counsel.
Question for me. How did we, how did we, how did we move forward with revenue bonds in the past?
So we either do it through general obligation, or with revenue, we do it through the Development Authority. Like the golf course, we were passed through, or the Development Authority was a pass-through for that funding. So that's how we've done it. I am not aware of any other revenue bonds that I can remember right off that we've had a separate authority.
But we do have an authority that does that currently.
So the Development Authority could be the authority, but.
I think they may be limited. I can't remember. We had this discussion a couple of years ago as to which was limited. And I think the Development Authority could only cover certain projects.
I'm pretty sure they can do municipal building.
No, so they can only do projects which further economic development. And the courts have said that, you know, garden variety governmental projects don't constitute, are not projects which can be financed by development authorities.
So can we just give whatever the legislation that you are presenting, any other, some of the requests from Commissioner Clemens, Commissioner Holmes? Let's get, make sure that everybody is aware of, you know, this is just discussion, there is no vote on this here today.
That's right.
Let's get the information to the board so that we can make a board decision as to if this is something that we're going to move forward with. And I appreciate the presentation.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Yes.
If bonds would make sure that in the legislation that they present, that it would state that the Board of Commissioners would be the advisory board, and that cannot be changed by legislation without a resolution from the board, as well as that the county attorney cannot serve as bond attorney and county attorney, just to avoid conflicts, if that is a conflict. So after you look at that, just make sure that all of that's in there. Because what generally happens is we'll do something with legislators, and then they can change it without us. We don't want to give them the authority to do it, and then they can just make the changes without the board.
Got it. That's a good point. And I know that we have worked with several bond councils of a county who've also been the public facility authorities so that there's not any extra fees that are needed. But I understand Mr. Holmes.
And I say, you would be, I mean, when the, it would be, the county is working with its authority. Meaning, the county would be, the governing body of the county is you, and the governing body of the authority is you. So I mean, this is, at the end of the day, a conduit bond issuer, meaning it is doing it, the authority exists on your behalf. You, meaning as the county. So if you see that as, if, I mean, someone could perceive that there being a conflict, but I don't see, I don't see a conflict when it acts on your behalf, solely on your behalf. So that's just something to note.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the appointment of the vice chair. I apologize that this was not on our January agenda. And I have a motion to appoint Commissioner Vivian Thomas as the vice chair from District Four. Can I get a second from Commissioner Holmes? And if there's no discussion, all in favor? Motion carries, thank you. Congratulations, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Consent agenda, if we can get the county manager to come forward and read the consent agenda, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022. We have an item under the District Attorney's Office, which is a resolution accepting the allocation for the Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Program, CESF Subgrant Funding Award to the Prosecuting Attorneys Council of Georgia by the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council of Georgia, CJCC, to be administered for the continuation of existing early notification advocate position for FY 2021, 2022, in the amount of $48,419. Under Parks and Rec, we have a resolution to award bid number 22-29 to K Team Engineering and Construction for the renovations at Cochran Park in the amount of $183,170, using funds from the Capital Improvement Funds. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution to accept a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, FY 2022 Law Enforcement Training Grant Program to support the Use of Force and Deeskalation Project in the amount of $30,000 for Henry County Police Department and surrounding counties. We also have a resolution accepting funds in the amount of $1,900 from the United States Secret Service for the Henry County Police Department's participation in the Electronic Crimes Task Force and approval of the accompanying budget amendment. Under the Sheriff's Office, we have a resolution accepting the Law Enforcement Training Equipment Grant, valued at $152,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, with no matching funds. from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, CJCC, with no matching funds. Under SWAS, we have a resolution approving the contribution of fixed assets to the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $111,471, and authorizing the chair and/or county manager to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to the new Fairview Police Precinct and Fire Station Number Six. We also have a resolution approving the contribution of fixed assets to the Henry County Water Authority in the amount of $37,185, and authorizing the chair or county manager to execute all necessary documents for conveyance of fixed assets relating to Village United Soccer Lacrosse Park. We also have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners awarding the bid for construction of a temporary signal for Rock Quarry Road at Red Oak Road to Reed Wick LLC in the amount of $77,510.75. Under Technology Services, we have a resolution approving the technology items and equipment currently deemed unusable by the Technology Services Director as surplus property, and authorizing the recycling of said items through the Henry County Recycling Center. This ends the consent agenda.
I'd like to get a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, please.
Got a motion from Commissioner? Second, by Commissioner Holmes. If there's no discussion, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you. On our regular agenda, our planning is on our RSZ-19-16.
Good morning, Madam Chair. This item before you, it had its public hearing back last month. This item is a resolution vote only. And I'm very happy to say that we're very close to coming together with the applicant to have almost complete acquiescence with the 41 conditions that we're looking at. We're really only about three items away from that pure acquiescence, spread over four conditions. So it's the recommendation of staff that we postpone this to a date certain, namely February 15th, so that we can work out the very few inconsistencies and bring this back before you.
Okay. Commissioner Clemens, I know that there's something that's in your district or-
So we just... Do we need to move to just table it?
Yes, ma'am, just like we did the last.
I'm going to table this to our next meeting.
Okay, all right. I got a motion to table, second by Commissioner Holmes. If there's no discussion, all in favor, motion carries. We'll table it until the February 15th meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is AP-21-04, District Five.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Let me just breeze through these slides and get to you the appeal. The item before you is for property located at Fairview Road and Dior Drive and is approximately 5.15 plus or minus acres. The property is currently zoned RA. The request is to appeal the denial of a variance request from Highway Corridor Overlay District and Development Standards. The original variance request had an associated rezoning request which will be heard at a later date. This is the site plan shown on your exhibit books, as well as on the overhead projection. The original variance request included a total of nine items, again, from Highway Corridor Overlay District standards, as well as the development standards of the R2 zoning district. The zoning advisory board did deny those nine requests. An appeal was submitted and is in front of you today for your approval or denial, your review. That appeal request is for four items. One, to eliminate the curb and gutter requirements for the R2 single-family residential zoning districts. Number two, relief from Highway Corridor, allowing lots five and six to take direct access onto Fairview Road. Number three, reduce the minimum lot width from 115 to 113 feet. And number four, eliminate the requirement to preserve 120 feet of right-of-way along Fairview Road. Compliance with the Highway Corridor Overlay District is required with the associated rezoning request, which, again, will be heard at a later date. If the property is to remain RA residential agricultural, the property would be exempt from Highway Corridor Overlay District standards. With that, staff does recommend denial of the applicant's request regarding elimination of curb and gutter requirement. Staff does also recommend denial of the applicant's request to eliminate compliance requiring reverse-facing lots. Essentially, that is denying the request to allow lots five and six to take access onto Fairview Road. Staff does recommend approval to reduce the minimum lot width from 115 to 113 for lots one through four, as well as elimination of compliance requiring a minimum of 120-foot right-of-way preservation along Fairview Road. That is all that I have for you, and I would be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so if there is anyone wishing to speak in favor of this project, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? This is the last call. You have 10 minutes to address the board. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Evan Chand. My address is 242 Goose Circle, Stockbridge.
If you wish to speak in favor, you can go ahead.
Pardon?
Go ahead.
I'm the president. I'm the president of the HOA. Yes. When this was first discussed a few months ago, we are the people who live in that subdivision. We were not 100% sure what RA and R2 meant, but we made some inquiries and found out that R2 would be construction similar to the ones that we are living in now, and also two which are still being constructed right now, that we approve of. We can't understand why it was turned down. And Good Cell Development Company said that they were going to appeal. Well, as long as constructions are being built similar to the ones that we're occupying now, we're in favor of it. Now, what I understand is the problem really is access to these properties on Fairview Road. Now, I would ask you gentlemen, lady, there should be some way of coming to some agreement with Good Cell Development to find an answer for this. If you could do that, then we would appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Please come forward. Please state your name and address.
Steve Goodsel, 3039 Bakers Meadow, Atlanta. Good afternoon now, it actually is. I'm the applicant, and I need to explain why I've asked for these variances, and why I believe, the neighborhood believes, and those that have spent time looking hard enough to understand this, believe that this request is in everyone's best interests. As staff has already pointed out, if the variances are denied, then the rezoning will be withdrawn, and it will remain as an RA subdivision, not subject to any of the rules of the Highway Overlay District. Somebody could build a 1,500-square-foot house, front-facing, without any action of the board. That's the existing situation. What I want to do is come in and build in the same manner that houses have been built inside of St. Laurent subdivision. The reasons that I'm not able to do that, given the Highway Overlay District in its entirety, is that this is a remnant piece of property where there isn't the depth or width or whatever to access this property from inside the subdivision. There's a cemetery that goes from... It's hard to see on that. But there is a cemetery right below where it says 80-foot right-of-way that sticks out all the way to the pavement. When we're talking about putting curb and gutter on this property, you're talking about trying to make the water that's in a ditch section right now, coming underneath driveways above us, to leap up into the street and get into the curb and gutter system, which is a drainage facility. And the drainage already runs behind the street. If you put curb and gutter on there, you've still got to pick up the water that's coming from upstream. It's still got to have a ditch section. So it really doesn't make a whole lot of sense. Some things we dropped don't make a lot of sense either, like a 10-foot sidewalk, deadening on both sides into a cemetery. What I need is the ability to develop in the same manner within the subdivision. Short of that, you know, I have this property under contract, I dropped my contract, and anything can happen. So I believe, and the neighborhood believes, that their best protections are to get zonings with many of the conditions, following the spirit of the Highway Overlay District, while still allowing enough of a consideration to allow this to go forward.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that wish to speak in opposition of this project, please come forward. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, here and now, Commissioner Holmes, this is in your district. I'm going to let you take it over.
First of all, I just want to apologize. But we won't be relaxing any standards in my district, so I'm going to move to deny.
Okay, so I got a motion, got a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion, all in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is AP-21... I'm sorry. No, we just did that one. Comp AM-21-01, Comprehensive Plan Amendment.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Just for the good of the Board of Commissioners, I just want to state that the next two items have actually been withdrawn by our applicant and would not be heard today.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Department of Transportation Resolution authorizing the chair to sign Georgia Department of Transportation Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, LMIG, application for fiscal year 2022. David.
Good afternoon, Chair and Board. GDOT began accepting applications for the FY 2022 Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, also known as LMEG, beginning July 1st, 2021. Henry County DOT is in process of requesting the GDOT LMEG funding. Georgia DOT would like to assist Henry County in the resurfacing of various county roads and other LMEG permitted activities, and GDOT will provide a check in the amount of $2,283,196.31. Applications must be received no later than February 28th, 2022. And this grant requires a 30% match, which equates to $684,958.89, and the county will meet this requirement through DOT asphalt budget. And you'll see there, the GDOT's $2,283,196.31 local match is the $684,958.89. You combine that, and that's $2,968,155.20. Dividing that by five for the districts, and just rounding up to a nice round number, we basically set up each district for $600,000 in LMEG funding and LMEG 22. And if you can read that list, this is the list we've met with each individual district commissioner, and went over this with LMEG. And you'll see there the listing of the roads, and I went in on the ones that are subdivisions and put the subdivision name kind of above the group of roads beneath it. So there's... Looking to do Mallard's Landing West portion, I think that's Spivey Chase, those are in District Two. And I think District One and Three have one individual road that takes up the money. You're looking at District Four, looking... Doing the resurfacing in St. Andrews at Rockport. And in District Five is Brookfield Woods and Fairview Heights, I think. And also adding on, there's a little section of Homestead Road that's mostly in Clayton County, but we've got a roughly half-mile segment in between the two Clayton County lines that where it's in Henry. So... And it shows each commissioner and district with the $600,000 each, and it shows that we would meet the LMEG funding match that we had exceed their 2.9 some odd million, proposing to about $3 million. And I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from the board? Here and now, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay, got a motion and second. No discussion, all in favor, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is under Financial Services Resolution approving FY 22 mid-year budget amendments for General Fund, NSP 3, Grant Fund, Henry County Development Authority, and Airport Budgets. Ms. Bernita? Ms. Bernita?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners and Henry County Community. Today I come before you for the review and approval of our FY 22 proposed mid-year budget adjustment. The Board was previously provided all of the details supporting the mid-year adjustment, so I won't go through any details. We will talk about the executive summary. But just to give you guys an overview of the process, our mid-year budget process is an annual adjustment. And this is where we take the current fiscal year adopted budget and we formally amend it based on any updated revenue and expense projections. The process, finance reviews the county revenues and expenses halfway through the fiscal year. The purpose is to determine if any budgetary adjustments are needed based on our updated revenue and expense projections. Once the mid-year budget adjustments are approved by the Board, we then have a revised budget, which is our new measurement tool for the remainder of the fiscal year. Next, we will look at our executive summary. So on line 1, we are currently projecting that we will have additional general fund revenues of about $9 million. And again, that's coming from increased lost and property tax collections. Items 3 through 5, those are what we consider one-time items. The first item is a proposed pension change for public safety and this would be removing the early retirement penalty. And that's $646,000. The next item is our pension contribution update, which we will be moving from the required contribution to the recommended. And that's about $625,000. And the last item is our capital improvements. And this is where we would set aside funds for our capital projects that are already on the capital improvement list. And that's about $2.4 million. Next, we move down to our departmental requests. And again, we previously provided details. So again, I'm just going to talk about the totals. The departmental requests are divided into two categories, personnel and operational. Our personnel request is about $3.2 million and that's primarily being driven by public safety, where they are requesting $3.1 million. And that's to bring on 17 new officers and five new supervisors, as well as covering our safer grant employees as that grant has ended. Next, under operational, we have about $2.2 million in requests. And you can see the different, how it's broken out by category. So our overall departmental requests come to $5.4 million. Here is a graphical representation of how the departmental requests are broken up. Public safety represents 71%. General government represents 7%. Other financing uses is 16%. Public works is 4% and judicial system is 2%. That ends my presentation. Are there any questions?
Okay. I know Commissioner Clemens has had some questions. Did we get those line items addressed?
Yes, ma'am. The support was provided.
Okay, all right, great. Commissioner Thomas?
Well, I didn't get the support because this is the summary that we had last time and I was waiting for some breakdowns. And I heard you constantly say that we have been provided, been provided. Where is it? I don't have it. And I specifically turned back to your statement. Back again, yes, there. Now, specifically, you said public safety want $3,105,383 to hire 17 new employees. Why are we hiring new employees? You've got so many vacancies that you're still trying to fill. So why are we going to put this item in here now when you're still trying to fill? What did you tell me the vacancy was in public safety? I don't remember the number, which is supposed to be one of the highest numbers that we have. So why you need $3 million now to hire new when you haven't filled the vacancies that are there that are already funded?
So Commissioner Clemens is going to speak to that.
And I'll come up.
And I don't have the support information on these line items, which we requested when she made her presentation before.
So the support probably was emailed about two weeks ago. It was a spreadsheet that had all the details on it. Bernita sent it and I said, please find attached the requested information from Ms. Campbell. It had every department listed with what those expenses were for. You didn't get it either? Okay. Let me, I will get that before we leave out of there. Get that hard copy to you.
One of the things may be too. I don't know how long this young lady's been with us.
More than a year.
Okay, but I'm not accustomed to getting financial reports from her.
It would have come directly from me because it was.
Oh, okay, so that may have been in.
So I will, I'll get a hard copy, so don't leave and I'll get that to you. In terms of the public safety, those are specifically for the police department. So while we do have vacancies throughout the agency, those vacancies are not within our police department. So he is filling those positions. And as quick as he's filling them, he's needing more requests. So that's what those positions are for.
So he don't have vacancies now?
Not for PD. So when we say public safety, that's animal control, sheriff, code enforcement, 911 and PD. So under the police department, based on what his needs are, he has a need for 17 additional positions that he needs to go ahead and get filled.
I think this was some of the confusion coming through because I really thought when we talked before, we were being specific because I asked where these were.
It was fired, 24 is what the number was.
It's fired. Police don't have any vacancies now.
No, ma'am. So those positions are for police department. And what I'll do going forward is when we say public safety, we'll put in parentheses what the numbers are. Hold on. Harold is telling me PD has 11 vacancies today. That's today. Now, keep in mind, that's from retirements, resignations. So it's going to, they will always have some vacancies just from people retiring and resignations. But the 17 is in addition to what the chief needs. I'm understanding that they're probably going to have those positions filled fairly quickly and then that'll give them room to open up for additional positions. So my apologies, they do have 11. And I have a breakdown of all of public safety if you need that, Commissioner Thomas.
Okay, because I remember one of the things she had put in there and it's not on this one. It was like membership. And I said, what type of memberships do we have? We're spending like $26,000 or something. It's not on this one, maybe it's on the other one.
It's our renewals for the water, North Georgia Water.
So it's the membership for the Northern Water Georgia Metropolitan Group, which is paid for partially between the Water Authority and the Stormwater Department.
Also... But it doesn't come out their budget, it comes out of this budget?
We have storm water.
Right, but remember that doesn't come out of general fund because your storm water is your enterprise fund. So it would come out of the enterprise fund.
So I thought storm water had their own budget too. So that's why I'm asking this question. I'm thinking the Water Authority had their budget that it comes out of and storm water has their budget. So it should not be in this budget.
No, ma'am. So you are doing a mid-year adjustment for all of our accounts for general fund and all of our enterprise funds, which would include the Stormwater Department.
Okay.
Commissioner Clemens, I think you had your hand up there.
Let me find this membership because Bernita's saying that Stormwater did not have a request. So let me figure out which membership you're referring to.
And Sherri, I need the Finance Department to tell us with the amendment, this has happened a couple of years. So we'll make a mid-year adjustment change. And then when it's time for us to do our annual budget, our annual budget increases based on we just did this mid-year adjustment increase, right?
That's correct.
So it's important that, you know, if we're going to make this mid-year adjustment, that we know how it's going to impact our regular budget because then we're ending up with having to fund things that we weren't funding before and it increases the budget, which increases the mileage rate. So there's a lot to this. So I need to know how is this going to impact the next year's budget? So if this is $6 million, what was the bottom line number on this? $9 million? So it's $9 million. Our budget is at a certain point now. And then we're going to increase it for the annual budget by other things as well, so.
So yes and no. You are correct, Commissioner Clemens, but a lot of these expenses are one-time expenses. So we'll be able, but that's, what you're saying is absolutely correct. Some of them may be reoccurring, like the new positions. That will be a reoccurring expense, meaning PD's budget will go up by that amount. But on some of the one-time expenses, then that'll be taken out because it was just a one-time expense. But you are correct in that.
So I would request that the Finance Department take a look at those things that are going to be impacting the annual budget and seeing if they should better be at the annual budget than right now at the mid-year because those 17 positions are not going to be filled before we do the July budget.
They could be.
I believe they could be.
Well, if they can be filled, then that means that we don't, we're not having an issue with hiring people. So it's just like.
Not in the police department.
Okay, then that we need to be clear with that.
Yes, yes.
So this, the show that we had presented before is that we don't have people, that we can't get people. We don't have an issue in our police department.
So we have a need in our police department. And keep in mind, that 17, I believe we actually cut it in half. He initially asked for more because he has a.
The police department can get whatever they need. That's a priority for this county. I'm not saying that. I'm saying, should it be in the, we just need to put it on the annual budget because that's going to be ongoing, right? Why are we doing it now? And then are we going to do the same amount for the annual budget? It looks like they'll be getting three payments to me. Because when we do the annual budget, it's going to be a full amount. Is this just for people that will finish for, what term is this covering?
This is for the current fiscal year. So when we do the new budget, we're getting ready to kick that off now, that'll be for FY 23 budget. So we're in fiscal year 22 now, but we, fiscal year 21, 22.
Okay, just be able to explain that, what I'm saying. Because it's like you're getting part of it now.
Everything that you have here, that will get us through the remaining six months of FY 22. So from January to June of '22. So these are the needs that we have right now.
What happens if they don't use that money for, they don't fill those positions over the next six months? And we put, what is it, 17 million, 17,000?
So they'll roll over because positions we do carry. Yes, ma'am. And Commissioner, I need to find, I don't see in any of the documents that Bernita has the membership. So I'll try to find that and then I will make sure that you all get that detail, which breaks down all the expenses.
Can you break down what are the one-time expenditures?
And those that are going over. So we wouldn't know the difference because we can't tell it here.
So everything lines 3 through 5, those are the one-time expenses. Everything listed under departmental will be considered recurring because, you know, those are personnel or contracts that the departments have entered into and those are costs that they're going to have to cover in the future. The only item that might not be recurring is under other financing uses where we're transferring $855,000 to NSP 3 to cover their contract cost, their general contractor cost.
Generals, I can barely hear you sometimes.
Okay, is this better?
What did you say about line 10 of the financing uses?
So I said lines 3 through 5, those would be considered one-time items. Line 10, depending upon how the NSP 3 program performs, that could be a one-time item and that's $855,000. If, you know, we could end up having to transfer more money to the NSP 3 program if they're not getting the grant revenue that they need to cover their expenses.
And please define what that is. A lot of times we use acronyms and initials and everybody don't know what it is. What is that program?
It's the Neighborhood Stabilization Project, the NSP 3.
What, community block grants?
Ms. Senio can provide more detail on the program.
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. You have questions regarding the NSP?
Yes.
My question was, she was using terminology and phrases that may not be familiar with everyone. So again, I asked you to define what the NSP, I think you said, is, which I know is community block grants, which may be something else. But define what it is so people know what we're funding and what you, the reason you expect to need this additional funds.
Yes, ma'am. So the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, the acronym is NSP. Those are funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Henry County initially began receiving these funds as early as 2008. These were one-time allocations from HUD and/or DCA specifically to assist counties, cities and states in recovering from the recession of the earlier 2000s. These funds have been used for property acquisition and rehab to sell properties back to low to moderate income households at affordable rates. We are currently focusing all attention with Neighborhood Stabilization Program on 50% LMI, area median income, for the sale of properties.
Okay, and if you don't receive the funding that you normally receive, you're saying we need to fill that gap.
So the, it is a reimbursement program. So the county expends the funds to acquire properties, rehab the properties and get them occupied by income-eligible households. And then we submit for reimbursement.
Okay, so then that money comes back that we are expending here.
So a portion of the funds will not come back. We do expect that a portion of the funds will not come back. Reason being, with these funds being allocated over 10 years ago, we've done requisite, we've done reconciliations in the reports and there are funds that were not refunded to the county. So there will be a deficit. These are reimbursement requests that were submitted over the years and there were funds that were not reimbursed to the county. So we do not expect all of the funds to come back.
And so, Shannon, without these funds?
What?
Without these funds, the county will have to pay the state. The funds have to go back to the state if they are not put into the community for the intended purpose of NSP. So one way or the, one way or another, the funds will be paid. It's either to be, to be invested into the community or paid to the state for violation of the program.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yes, ma'am.
Any additional, Commissioner Clemens?
So I'm hoping that we can get this breakdown because I still don't know what, the 6 through 10, the specifics for them are. And I would also like to see, under the judicial system, the clerk presented before us. And maybe that's something that needs to be there because I don't know what that ongoing expense will be. Or maybe it needs to go at the top to the one-time expenses for the clerk's office because that's still considered services to the community based on what she was saying. So David needs to look at that and see if it's better placed here or on the ARPA.
So was the judicial system, was that for the clerk or was that for the fourth judgeship?
This one here is for judgeship, but I'm saying the clerk stuff should be on here. I don't know if they, if she was given an opportunity to put anything on here for what she needed.
She was. And the project that she presented this morning, we were thinking it would be more suited under ARPA. So that's the reason why it was included in the ARPA presentation instead of in our operating budget adjustment. So that's why it's not here.
Okay. So is it, is it a one-time expense?
Yes, I think there will be ongoing maintenance for it. But what she initially presented this morning would be a one-time expense.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
So the $24,000 number with storm water, we had it all meshed in together. That was under facility maintenance. And if you'll remember, they're having to pay those additional storm water fees. So that's what that number was for, Commissioner.
Thank you.
So this is an action item. So our resolution, correct, Sherri?
Correct. This is a resolution amending our mid-year budget.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Mr. Frazier of the Board?
This may be directed to Mr. Smith. And if, if we approve this $9 million adjustment, are we still in position to highly consider the raises that we want to do for our employees? Are we in good shape for that?
We're in great shape for that.
Thank you, sir. I like that response.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve mid-year budget?
Hold on, what?
Commissioner Holmes, did you have a question?
Yeah, what's in, what's in general government?
So that would be primarily facilities maintenance. They had $172,000.
They had $172,000 in requests, and that was to cover emergency repairs and replacements, as well as to cover additional cost of materials. Also falling under general government is risk management, tax commissioner, budgets, and community service.
Community service?
Yes.
What is community service?
Is there personnel in, in any of this budget, mid-year budget, that we need to know about specifically?
Personnel is in the first column, and the public safety cluster is requesting $3.1 million.
The judicial, and I see what Commissioner Holmes is talking about. Under personnel for public safety, it has 28, 5, 4, 4 under the judicial system. We know that the public safety is 17 police officers. And then under general government, it has 42, 6, 5, 4.
Okay, so under judicial system, the 28, 5, 4, 4 is primarily from the DUI court, and that's upgrading one part-time case manager to a full-time position, and that's about $25,000. And under general government, there is a request for one project and business analyst in tech services for about $42,000.
I have to ask this question. Is the unapproved security vehicle in expenses in this mid-year budget? Unapproved security for the chair?
No, sir.
Okay.
Chair, I would like to make sure that we can, it's not an urgency to do this today. Let's get the breakdown, so that we can be very clear what it is. No questions, no accusations. Let's just be real clear of what these breakdowns are for in writing. Sherri, I really would like to have a copy of it, and in that way, if it says general government 42, 6, 54, we know where that 42, 6, 54 is going, all the way down, and then we don't have to worry about.
So under exhibit 15 in your package, tell me what additional information you all need, because that's, that's in here. And so I want to make sure I'm giving you the right information. So under exhibit 15 in your package, there is a list of personnel that's listed, and who it's for and what it's for.
I'm not concerned about personnel. I mean, I'm concerned about all of it, not specifically--
So after that page, let me, and I want to make sure y'all have the, because the information is in the package, and if it's not, I need to know so that we can make sure that we're giving it to you. So this is what you all should have. This is page one. And then, and as part of the package, that information is listed. It lists the department, the account name, a description, and the amount, and then what was recommended. And then we have it for each of the other items. So help me so that I can make sure I'm giving you the right information. So that's listed for, again, general government. You have under procurement, regular employee salary adjustment from a procurement agent, two, two or three, or two a lead. Under tech services, there is project and business analyst, that's a new position. So all of it is, we're trying to give you every detail to make sure. Under judicial system, you'll see clerk of superior court, small equipment, and we even described, the equipment is for new employee for the fourth judge, the amount.
So let's talk about general government, 42. We got professional contract services.
Yes, ma'am.
That's $28,000. We, I think we discussed that last time, of what that, what contracts were those for? And are these contracts that's gonna come before the board, not before the board? Is this something that you just signed, Sherri? And I remember that being under the, that we--
I have it up on the screen. So if you look at line item 42, under professional contracted services, it's the ClearGov, which is the current application that we currently utilize for all of our budgeting. It's also what we utilize for SPOS. I brought it before the board. I've even done a sample of showing that the ClearGov. So this is not a new contract. So I don't, nothing in this budget authorizes me to sign a new contract. This is just budget amendments for current applications and operations that we currently have.
And extension services had a technical contracted services, UGA contractors.
Yes, ma'am. So under extension services, two of those employees are employed through the state of Georgia. Their, their salaries increase as a result of the state, and we have a contract that's already in place that we have to pay a portion of that salary. So that's what that is for. But there are no new contracts in the mid-year. We couldn't, we couldn't add a new contract through this process.
I kind of agree with Commissioner Clemens. I think we should bring it out, bring it back for the next meeting. We've been requesting information for months and haven't been able to get any information. So it's, it's kind of difficult to look at this and, and, and vote on it, because, you know, given the fact that we have SB 22, and we have no control over, over, over the county manager's office or the employee, or the employees, we have no idea if, if any of this information is factual or anything like that. And I know I missed the budget meeting, but I would like to, I would like to take the opportunity to, to review this in detail, maybe even sit down with you and go over it.
So I'm, I'm gonna defer to Chair Harrell. And this is 12:30. The information that we've provided is available to any commissioner through our Tyler system. This is a made-up information. And, and I know that there is some frustration in terms of information being provided. I think for the record, we're discussing Chair Harrell's security detail. I have provided to this board all of the documents that I have. If there is anything else that this board is looking for, you're gonna have to go to the source, which would be Chair Harrell. If there is, if you want to know specifics about travel and training, I don't have that information. The only information I have is information that's available to me as the county manager for employees that report to me as the county manager. The information that we've provided is as detailed as you all have ever seen. It gives every detail of what we're asking for, what the expenses are, who it's related to. There is nothing hidden in this mid-year adjustment. So that's why we have two separate documents. We have the general operating document, and we have the personnel document. And we specifically laid out every item, because we know that your concerns are making sure that we're not adding additional positions to this budget, or me just signing off on things. I, I don't know what more information I can provide to the board to, to convince you all that what we're providing is factual information. And, and the staff, we, we try diligently every two weeks to come to this board, present information. But when we stand here and it's being said that we can't trust what staff is saying, I, I take offense to that, Chair Harrell. And I'm, I'm coming to you, because Commissioner Holmes said Senate Bill 22 specifically gave you the authority over the county manager. So I'm publicly saying that I can't stand here and allow staff to stand here and be accused of making up information. We're not making up information. Those are, those are targeted comments, and that's, that's just not appropriate, Commissioner Holmes. And it's, it's just not appropriate. And we, no, sir, we stand here every two weeks, and, and I'm getting frustrated, because every two weeks we stand here, we prepare a package for this board to review that has every piece of information, and yet and still it's not enough. So help me to help you all, because I don't know what else to provide.
Sure, I think the frustration is, I mean, we've, we asked for information four months ago, and by law, we should get the information--
So what information have you asked for that I haven't provided, Commissioner Holmes?
All expenses for, for, for the chairs, unapproved security. We asked for that information, and nobody has gotten it. I know Commissioner Clemens asked for--
So let's be very clear. My security detail is not unapproved. You don't have to approve any security or protection that I need due to threats from constituents in your district. So either we're going to vote on this, or we're not going to vote on it. Either we're going to get a, either we're going to have a motion to approve this, or we're not. Otherwise, the meeting is going to be adjourned.
Madam Chair, we are--
Chair, I move to table this.
Okay, the, the motion is second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor? The majority rules. Meeting is adjourned. Have a good day.